Everything up? Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Russell County Board of Supervisors, September the 12th, 2022, at six PM in the Russell County Conference Center. I'd like to first start off with a call to order in Rockaway. Tim Lovelace. Carl Ray. Carl has called in. He is ill right now, so he wanted to convey that to the board. David Eaton. Steve Brady. Rebecca Dye. Oris Christian. Luann Wallace. Ma'am, you have a forum.
Thank you. Is our microphone working for you all in the back? I can't get it turned on. All right. At this time, I'm going to ask you to please rise for our invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, Lord in heaven, we love you, we thank you, and we praise you today, Father. Father, we thank you for allowing us to come out and be a part of our local government. And we thank you for being with us during this troubling time, Father. Be with us, lead us, guide us, and direct us. Help us make the right decisions. In your name, we pray. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic for which we stand, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Tonight, we have some very special guests with us. And those of you who are here are going to recognize these folks today. And so it is an honor when we get to recognize people in our county who are doing fun things, wonderful things, and making us very famous in the meantime. So at this time, you guys, hold your seat. I am going to introduce to you Linda Skeens, the baking queen. Because we want to stand here so you guys can see Linda. She has just, I'm going to steal her thunder. Do you mind, Linda? She has just flown in from California, and she's been on the...
Kelly Clarkson Show.
So she's having a great time representing what she does best. Tell them what you do, Linda.
Cooking and baking and crafting and a whole bunch of stuff. Mostly cooking and baking.
Okay. And her favorite recipe is?
Uh... What? What'd you say? Yeah, Mexican cornbread. Yeah. That's my vote. That's not my family's, but that's mine.
Okay. So what's your family favorite?
That one likes lasagna. What I'm likes Parmesan chicken. My husband likes anything I put in, so he's not picky.
Got his samples.
So Linda did not bring samples tonight, because like I say, she just flew in from California, remember? So everybody voted on the staff to give Linda an apron that says, "Queen of Cooking." Linda, here's your apron. Wait a minute. Wait a minute. Wait a minute. And didn't I say Linda's from Castlewood, by the way? Now, we've got this lovely resolution, and I'm going to read it, so bear with me. Whereas the legendary Linda Skeens, also known as Baking Queen throughout southwest Virginia and the nation, is a resident of our neighboring Wise County. That's not right, is it? We're rewriting that. I signed it, by the way. Whereas Linda Skeens performs at the local Virginia-Kentucky Fair, winning 25 separate ribbons for her cooking, baking, and crafts, has garnered rich fame, including an appearance on The Today Show, and we're adding Kelly Clarkson when we rewrite this, and who else?
I'm in the process of doing a cookbook.
Everybody get your recipes together, because you're going to buy a cookbook off of Linda.
They're from Alabama. The county that's doing, they publish Paula Dean's cookbooks and a whole bunch more.
The new Paula Dean of Russell County. Now therefore, be it resolved by a unanimous vote, the Board of Supervisors here commends Linda Skeens, also known as the Baking Queen, for her incredible contributions to southwest Virginia and to our Appalachian culture and to Russell County. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the Board of Supervisors prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to Linda Skeens as an expression of the Board's admiration for her contributions to Russell County, adopted this day, the 12th of September, 2022. Give Linda a round of applause.
Senator Mark Warner and we exchanged recipes. I got to meet Senator Mark Warner here in Lebanon a few weeks ago, and we exchanged recipes. He gave me a lousy one, he said, and I gave him a good one, but we exchanged them. And he gave me a letter of congratulations.
We love you, Linda.
Love you too. Thank you so much.
Give her a round of applause. All right. Now remember, these are our resolutions for today. There's more to come, so hang with me. We knew we'd have a big audience tonight, so we entertain you a little bit. By the way, have you been listening to country music these days? No one's listening to country music. Have you ever heard of a little place called Winchester Street? Forty-Nine Winchester? That's their address. And the boys from Forty-Nine Winchester have been all over the United States last year, working real hard and making a name for themselves and Russell County. And so tonight, it is our absolute pleasure that we're going to have the boys from Forty-Nine Winchester come and receive their resolution as we declare April the 9th, which is four-nine, as Forty-Nine Winchester Day. So Caleb?
(singing) And my heart is...
Come on out, boys.
(singing) On the road, Lord, try to hold me...
Give him a hand.
(singing) Just for you to hold. And if you wonder how I'm doing, know that I am doing fine, but I wish I was in Virginia on the Russell County Line.
Thank you. I just couldn't resist doing that. We want to talk about grand entrance. And tonight is their resolution. Whereas the musical group Forty-Nine Winchester was formed in Russell County on Winchester Street, and they keep having their signs stolen, so we ordered Ms. Debbie and Mr. Gary a case. And you might need a pole. Okay. Whereas the group consists of Isaac Gibson, raise your hand, Isaac, Buzz Shelton, lead guitar Chase Chafin, Noah Patrick, all righty, Tim Hall on the piano, and Justin Loughlin. I don't believe Justin was able to be here. And whereas the group has grown to national fame and has contributed to the country music genre that is enjoyed all over the world, and whereas the group's greatest hit and most exceptional song is the Russell County Line and should be played during the next meeting of this Board of Supervisors, we may come out to that one next time, boys. Is that okay? Whereas on August the 30th of 2022, the group made its debut in the legendary Grand Ole Opry, and henceforth annually, April the 9th shall be forever known as Forty-Nine Winchester Day in and throughout Russell County, Virginia. And now therefore be it resolved by a unanimous vote, the Board of Supervisors hereby commends the group Forty-Nine Winchester for its incredible contributions to country music and entertainment, and be it further resolved that the clerk of the Board of Supervisors prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to Mr. Isaac Gibson as an expression of the Board's admiration for the group's contribution to Russell County, Virginia, adopted this day, September 12th, 2022. Isaac, go ahead.
Thank you guys so much. I appreciate it greatly. Russell County means a lot to us. We were born and raised here. I plan on being here until I'm gone. People are always asking me when I'm going to move to Nashville, and I don't think I ever will. This place means a lot to us. It's got some of the finest people we've ever, ever known and ever will meet, and it's always been that way. It's a point of great pride to be where we're from. It's kind of hard for Appalachian artists to sometimes get a foothold in this business, but we're glad we've been able to break that mold a little bit, and we really appreciate the support, and we appreciate this honor. It means a great deal to us. Thank y'all.
And Doro, I'm so sorry that I don't have something for me to do, but your presentation is next.
All right. I was blessed to be able to speak last Board of Supervisors meeting, and I'm really grateful that y'all gave me a little more time to talk about Vet Fest, southwest Virginia. Real quick, the reason we're doing this, military-related suicide is an epidemic that is awful. Veterans themselves are 50% more likely to die of suicide than their, you know, civilian peers. More than 6,000 veterans a year die of suicide, and actually, the suicide rate between 18- and 34-year-old male veterans has increased 93% since 2006. So there's a big need for us to look at this and do something about it. We have therefore partnered with Stop Soldier Suicide, an organization that has started as a three-people call center for their soldiers and has now grown into a national organization that not only takes calls, but also is able to do boots-on-the-ground therapy, cut red tape. And one of the big things that I like about the organization, and also my friends, King Wiggs, Alfred, who is the president of Fallen Warriors, Beth Hurt, who is also helping us with Vet Fest, it doesn't matter how you separate from the military. Not everybody is able to get an honorable discharge, but if you don't have an honorable discharge, you don't get the help that you might need. Stop Soldier Suicide helps anybody regardless of what's on your P D two fourteen, which is your separation papers. We have Vet Fest again this year, September 24th, at the Russell County Fairgrounds. We hope it's going to be great fun. Last year was wonderful. The Russell County Sheriff's Office helped us a great deal. They participated in the Tabo War. We thank them yet again. It was big fun. We had a 5K, we had a 12K run, we had a car show, and for this year, we have upped our game a little bit. We went ahead and made sure we get everything packed into one day, because two days was a little much. This year, we are able to present veterans, their families, and our communities with a lot more resources. We have organizations like the Fallen Outdoors. They organize fishing trips and hunting trips for veterans. We have the Art Center out of Johnson City. They do arts and crafts and painting and everything artsy for veterans. It's phenomenal. I talk to them, and they're just wonderful. They're going to be here. You can actually even purchase art from veterans while you're at Vet Fest. We're going to have Ex-Grilling. We're going to have the Army recruiting, bringing their big gaming trucks, so there's something for the younger generation. Also, between the Virginia State Police and Haswell County Sheriff's Office, they will be doing canine presentation. We're going to have narcotics. We're going to have patrol and bomb searching dogs. So that's going to be really, really big thing. We will have a scavenger hunt, which we've always wanted to do something because the fairground lends itself to that. The big prize on that is a four-person escape room coupon for Bristol, so that's free. So if you win this, there's no admission to do that. You just go and be a part. Admission into the fairgrounds is free, as usual. For our Vet Fest, we will have a silent auction. We have so far received paintings, wooden flags, baskets for... Just people were so generous to give to us, so just come on out. This is something everybody can do. We have a car show, which cars, Jeeps, everything is welcome. And of course, in the morning, we start out with our 5K run walk and our 12K run. Everybody can do that. We have this year, we were really blessed. Somebody donated electronic timing, so we actually are really official this year. So if you want to partake in the 5K, you can go to Tri-Cities, Run Tri-Cities, or State of Franklin Track and Field Club website, and you can register online right there. Our opening ceremony is going to be, I think, the most important thing for everybody, because it'll give everybody the chance to reflect on why we do this. And this year, I have mentioned it before, on our T-shirt, we have Austin Darti's dog tags. Austin is a graduate from Lebanon High School. He graduated in 2013. He went into the Navy right after he graduated, did wonderful, did great, has a little son, Keegan. And somehow, he got in a little bit of trouble. Nothing anybody should have thought it would push you to that point, and apparently, he didn't have a hand to reach out. And he decided the thing to do was end his young life. I'm sure if he would have known that Stop Soldier Suicide is there, that us as a community would always be there for him to reach out, that we don't judge anybody, that it doesn't matter why we think we have to end our lives, I'm pretty sure he would still be here. Doesn't matter if he would have lost a military career. That would have been sad, but he would still be here for his son. So Vet Fest, yes, it is called Vet Fest, but it is called also Bridge the Gap. It is very, very important for me that everybody in Russell County, in southwest Virginia, knows that military-related suicide affects everybody, and we can all do something about it. And even if we just go to the gentleman who's wearing the veteran's hat at the store thanking for our service, that'll... You have no idea how that makes somebody stay. We have resources where you can learn how to help if you want to help more. Just come out to our Vet Fest. Like I said, no admission. There's going to be stuff for everybody to do, and every penny that we make will go straight to Stop Soldier Suicide. We're not going to say, well, all the profits. No. Everything we take in goes straight to Stop Soldier Suicide, and that is just important to us. Last year, we were able to give $4,500, I think, as a first event that's really good. This year, we want to double that, and I really ask everybody to come out and help us and make that a good event for everybody to enjoy and for us to be able to pass on to Stop Soldier Suicide.
Thank you, boys. Remind us again the date, on Saturday, September the...
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Yes, ma'am.
Starting at nine AM.
Nine o'clock. And the opening ceremony will be at noon, so if somebody doesn't want to do the 5K or the 12K, at noon is the opening ceremony.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming back. Moving on, we put our PSA report up front, so for our presentation, so I'm going to ask you the board if you're in that PSA report tonight.
Good evening. I listened to this lady's presentation. I was the preacher in Austin. Terrible, terrible tragedy. And I really recommend, folks, come out and support this. It's very worth it. And I commend this lady for her hard work in doing that. Are you close to the mic? Yes. That being said, I felt like that the Board of Supervisors and the public needed to know a little bit about what was going on with Russell County PSA. We were combined a couple of years ago. Where now? We are one single water company, and we have faced some challenges, but we're making a lot of progress and getting a lot of things accomplished. One thing that I'd love you folks to look at, I'll not go through it, but I'll let you some documents there that speaks about the fire hydrants in Russell County. And you'll notice there's two different packets of them, and you'll notice the color codes. Please understand that when you go to the end and you look, it explains to you about the color codes and the fact that these hydrants have either been repaired, replaced, or removed. And the only reason that we would remove is because some of these hydrants were on deadlines. The lines had no water in them, and we didn't want the possibility that someone would pull up to a hydrant and waste all their time. So we want you to know, there's been a lot of discussion in the public about fire hydrants in Russell County and the fact that there were so many of them out of operation. But that's no longer true. One of the most... One of our greatest goals on PSA was to make sure that we got these things fixed and up to date. And I also want to thank you guys. Without the support, coordination with the Russell County Board of Supervisors and Alonzo Lester helping us, this would have been a lot harder and a longer process. And the main thing we want, folks, we want the people in Russell County to be protected, and we also want them to have good clean drinking. Now that being said, I'll let you some more documents there that talk about some of the projects that we have going on in Russell County at this time. I don't think most people understand exactly how much we do have going on. We have projects going that are in process, that will soon be in process, and that we're looking at to get into process. A lot of folks in the county have approached us, asking for help getting water to their communities. And folks, we want, that's our business, that's what we want to do. We would love to see every home in Russell County served with clean drinking water. That will take time. There are situations when it makes a project very difficult to do. But the main thing we have to do is start a process, apply for funding, and then see what happens. If you'll notice on the documents I left you, we have several things that we are looking at that are in process. We just finished a Glade Hollow and Glade Hill project that was funded well from our funding agencies. We'll soon start a Nash's Ford and Clinch Mountain project. Bell Face, we've got three, three or four phases going on right now within. But one thing I want to point out to you even more so, we have two projects that are very important. The Daint Sewer Project, if you'll take a look at that, that is a $2.5 million project to take the sewer from Daint to the town of St. Paul. Ladies and gentlemen, that is totally grant-funded, right, Steve? Something that's very important. One of the things that hinders us when we're trying to do water projects is the amount of loan we take on as well as grant. One thing that they ask for is for it to cash flow and for you to have the revenue to pay the debt on the project. We also have a project in Daint, Straight Hole Project. It's a... We're refurbishing lines there, replacing lines, and it is $1.5 million, and it is totally grant. And we've got other projects, House and Barn Mountain, that we're looking at. We filed an application to get funding, try to get funding to do that. What I... The main thing I'm here for, folks, as I told you, is I want you to know that we are trying our best to do everything we can to get fresh, good, clean drinking water for Russell County. We're not sitting on our hands, and if you have a problem, or you have an issue, or you have a project, please contact us. We'll do anything we can to try to help, but please understand, it's a difficult process, and sometimes it can't be done. Now, I'm not, I would never paint somebody picture that no matter what, we can do it, but we will always try. So if you have some questions, I'll be glad to answer them. One thing I want to say, Tim, just being in your area, we're working at this time on a project to try to get water, well, Steve's a little aware of it, to the High Point area. To, for very little service, you get out of Castlewood. We're working hard to try to get a project started on High Point, so we can serve that area down there. We're continuously at it. So, and you folks on board, if you have a problem or question, someone comes to your mind, please contact me. I can't promise you I can answer it, but we have a really great gentleman that works for us, Tracy Puckett, our new director. I guarantee I can get you an answer for you. So you folks have any questions?
I do, just off the plate, Steve. When you look at the fire hydrants, they're supposed to be inspected. Are we doing that yearly for five annual?
That will be a yearly thing that we do. One of the things that I would like for the citizens to do, if you know of a problem with a hydrant or anything, please let me know. I promise you, as long as I'm on the board, it will not get in the shape it was in again. That will not happen. So... That will not happen. So congratulations, Madam Chairman, on the election to the Virginia Association President, right? The planning commission?
Thank you.
Congratulations. But thank you guys. If you need anything, if you have any questions, just please let me know. Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion for the approval of the minutes from the last board meeting.
I'll move.
I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
I have a second, I'll accept it, your way. All in favor?
Aye aye aye.
Any opposed? Any extension? Motion carries. Moving over to the approval of the constituents for payment. I'm leaving a motion.
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Breeding, I need a second. I have a second for Mr. Christian, all, any discussion? I'll call for questions. All in favor?
Aye aye.
Any opposed? Any extension? Motion carries, thank you. All right, moving forward to item number three on the agenda, committee appointments for board consideration. And first we have our Turaven Advisory Committee for District Four, that's in favor.
This man has chair, I have Lisa Hubbard, I would like to appoint that.
Okay. Mr. Eaton has, now this is his appointment, so we're not going to have a battle over this. Mr. Eaton has Ms. Hubbard for consideration. All in favor? Oh, I need a motion, he's got a motion, I need a second.
Second.
The committee appointments? Boris gave me more than one ticket, Mr. Eaton gave me a motion, so I'm going to take it. I know, it's committee appointments, but nothing but by the chair, I will argue that.
Ma'am, Tim seconded it.
Oh, okay, thank you very much, we can't all do a thing down here. All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Eaton, you've got, we've got full representation on the TAC Advisory Committee for our county, thank you. Next we have on the agenda, the Russell County Public Service Authority, we have a vacant seat. That is- Sir. Sir. Going to place Mr. Harry Ferguson's name then on that position. It was mine, getting my three-year term and running out now it's two, ten. Mr. Philip Homel could not serve. Okay, we have a motion for Harry Ferguson to serve the unexpired term of Mr. Philip Harris. I need a second.
Second.
I have a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Any extension? Motion carries. Next we come down to the Russell County Library. And is this a, is this one vote or is this a different vote? I cannot remember from who you were coming to, I apologize.
Everybody hear Mr. Breeding? Everybody hear me? I like to put Judy Ashbrook. She was, she was taken off in that box and I had to point this one person for dis- we just went away from there somehow, she just got left off. I really like the place of that, she was dedicated, member of the library.
Okay, so those people that have, their names that are presented currently for the Russell County Public Library, we just want to add Ms. Ashbrook to the list.
Yes.
And that will give us the representation.
Yes.
Have you anything to say, ma'am?
I'm not aware if there, I think Steve represented, there's no cap on the library board. If you put Ms. Ashbrook back on, is that the same number that's been on there or will that add an additional number?
No, she was on there before. I think she was off.
As long as there's no limits or it's not a set board, like there's seven, then legally there's not an issue with that.
I'll make a motion that we just accept the slate.
Thank you, we have a motion to accept the slate as presented with the addition of Ms. Ashbrook.
I'll see.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, thank you Steve. Next, we're coming down to the Upper Tennessee River Roundtable, we have unexpired, is this an unexpired term, Mr. President, I forgot the name?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
Nathaniel, Nathaniel Rasnik, he moved, so we have to pick this.
So we have an unexpired term to be filled and I will ask for a motion to approve and have this slate added. I'll nominate Mary Gordon. Okay, I have a motion for Mary Gordon. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All, if none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, thank you. Next, we're coming up on our citizen comment period time. If you have signed up for the sheet that you need to speak, we will accept public comments at this time. I will tell you, three minutes, nation time, and you're very quick. All right. Now, let me, you all give me just one moment before I start calling, so there's a couple in, there's a couple in here that may not be exactly from the same, so if you all would give me chairman's privilege, I'm going to jump around just a minute in case if you're going to speak and you might not want to stop. Brandon Moore from Moccasin concerning the Moccasin Trash Facility. Moore, are you here? All right. Is the president running for?
So I'm coming to y'all today about ongoing problem with the Moccasin Trash Dump. On the Russell County Board of Supervisors Facebook, you have posted an unmanned site such as Moccasin would be seven to six, right? About every day it's closed before six. I'm closing yesterday when it was closed fifteen minutes before six. Well, July twenty-fifth, I sent Mr. Lovelace a email about it, never got a reply, so I'm not sure what did he really is. But, you know, you call it a convenience site, but it's convenient only for the person open to closing the area. When you aren't five and six days a week and you try to make it there before six o'clock, at times it's closed, you know, five-thirty, five-forty-five, other times four, four-thirty, locked up, where am I supposed to put my trash? I hauled around four bags of trash yesterday, should have brought it up here and put it on y'all's steps. It's getting ridiculous, it's all the time thing, it's been emailed to the Board of Supervisors, no response, something needs to be done about it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Next on the list, next on the list, now remember, I'm moving around, so forgive me, I'm taking my privilege of the chair. We have Victor Hall, he wants to speak on PSA matter.
July sixth, approximately two-thirty AM in the morning, your main water line broke, flooded my garage, flooded my collectible car, it's a project being built. I called the water company about the damages, they kept denying, knowing anything about it for three days. I finally said, you have to by law give me the information I need. So then they gave me the name of the insurance company, claim number, with phone number. I called the insurance company, the first words out of their mouth, we're not paying a dime. Now the water company is up in air because I'm kicking dust up about all the damages that I had. So much to the point to where they went to my other house across the road the day after Memorial Day and they removed the meter base and the meter, I had no service, it's a house my sister lived in, she died. They removed my meter base, my meter box, like it was never there. I called them, they're playing games, they're like, oh, we were just digging for a meter to get a meter reading. I said, there's not been a meter for five years. Why would you be digging for a meter to get a reading? You didn't read anybody else's meter in the neighborhood that day. And they sent the guys back out and they're standing there telling me, oh, we didn't, we were just looking for a meter. They need to make this right, they need to replace my meter base and my meter because I'm close to having a house ready to move in too. There's no reason for them to treat me like this, I've been a customer for almost twenty years, never laid on my bill, never in any trouble with them, paid my bill in advance many times. And I've got damages, a lot of damages from the flood. I went out at six-thirty in the morning, I said, what's going on? They said, oh, we got a little water leak here. And I said, oh, okay, he goes, we got it finished, you know, repaired, we're leaving. Said, we'll be back in a couple of weeks to spread some dirt out and fix your land. Two, three weeks later, they don't show up. I call them, they said, ah, we've decided you don't need no dirt. But that same morning, I saw a flood line across my garage. They didn't, they didn't tell me that I had been flooded at early morning hours, I called the water company, I said, why did you knock on my door? The lady says, we don't like to get involved. I mean, they're just blowing me off, like my damages don't count. And that's not fair to me, to fair to anybody, to have to endure all this loss. You know, that's what insurance is for. They said, oh, it wasn't negative. Well, there was a fire, guy doing the repair said, oh, there was a fire on gravel there. Said, we backed, charged the line probably a little too fast, that's what made the line blow out. Look, I know it was an accident, but it still needs to be taken care of by the insurance. My meter base and my meter box needs to be put back on my other home that I'm restoring. There's no reason to treat me this way, they're playing games and I'm not real happy about it. And, I mean, that's the facts of the story, I got pictures, all the proof. I told them I was going to take it to court if I had to, that's when they started playing the games. That's when they just took out the meter base and the meter box. And I'd like for whoever's in charge over that department to look into it and contact me so we can rectify this without it getting any messier than it already is. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Next, next on my agenda is Annie Stevens. Stevens, is she here?
Hello, I'm Annie Stevens, I work for New Garden Rescue Squad. We came to you all about five months ago requesting additional funding. We have yet to get that, we did receive a letter saying that we were going to get additional funding throughout the month. Our bills have went up, I got to investigating it and Medicare hasn't changed the reimbursement rate that I can find since 2001. So with that being said, we've asked you all for a little extra help. You all received the NARCAN grant, we haven't received anything from that. The ARBA funds were received about three months ago, we haven't received anything from that. So I'm here again today requesting some additional funding for my rescue squad and for my sister agencies. And is that all I get to talk about?
Yeah.
Because I have more.
You've got three minutes.
Okay, so I have called, I have emailed, I have texted, and I'm not getting anything back either. The second thing is the trash can was taken from Feeny, my road is disgusting, there is a pile of trash at Feeny, eighty-plus bags. When I go to work at the Rescue Squad, I have to dodge huge bags of trash, boxes, you name it. My road is horrible. And the last thing I'd like to talk about is the PSA. If they could work with the fire department and show them where the working fire hydrants are, so when we have like a fire at three in the morning, we're not out searching for a working hydrant. So I'm asking if you all will look into that and give me some answers, I don't know where else to go. Thank you.
All right, next on our list is Sandy Hess.
My name is Sandy Hess from Swords Creek. I have to admit that I struggled with what I was going to say tonight, if anything, but I feel that it's very important for you all to hear from the people that you are elected to represent. Last month, we heard from a great majority of the county on their views about abortion. We heard several people give personal recounts of how they had lost a child or almost lost a child. We heard from several that gave biblical reasons as to why we think abortion's wrong. We even heard from some that gave scientific and medical validation that a fetus is a living baby. I specifically expressed a concern that abortion providers would come to our county and wanted a preemptive measure to prevent it from happening instead of waiting on it to happen and then trying to do something about it. We asked this board to draft and approve a resolution that would declare Russell County a pro-life sanctuary county. We asked for a resolution for protection from conception through old age and natural death, which Mr. Breeding provided. We are fully aware that this is only a statement, that it holds no legal bearing in actually prohibiting an abortion clinic from coming to Russell County. However, it is a bold statement, a statement to the rest of the state and the country that we do believe in preserving the dignity of the preborn and we are willing to protect it. That we believe every child should have a chance at life. Russell County would certainly not be the first county to make such a resolution. Campbell County, Virginia adopted a pro-life resolution in July of this year. Eleven cities and four counties in Mississippi, North Carolina, Arkansas, and Alabama are pro-life and since June, nineteen states protect life at conception. The US Supreme Court stated in Pulver versus Doh in 1977 that the US, the US Constitution does not forbid a municipality pursuant to democratic processes from expressing a preference for normal childbirth instead of abortion. So there are plenty of examples to point to how we are able to do this resolution. But the reason I struggled with what to say is because I find it difficult to believe this is even an issue. The fact that abortion was ever made legal in the first place astonishes me. The fact that over sixty-three million babies have died since Roe versus Wade was decided astonishes me. The fact that there would be one baby killed in Russell County legally astonishes me. And if we have the opportunity to at least begin to do something about it, let it begin with this resolution. At least it's a start, at least it's a statement and your vote is your personal statement.
Thank you, Ms. Hess, would you like to submit your written comments on the record? Okay. By the way, if you have written comments tonight, if you want to speak, they submit your comments, it will be in the record. All right, next person is Michelle Vance.
I know you get three minutes, that's why I was hoping that you can bear with me while I'm through this. I was encouraged to come up here by my friends. I can do my statement. So I wrote it down so I don't lose myself. Our life means so much more to me than saving the lives of unborn children. It is also saving the mental health of a mother and even a father of the unborn child. It is also saving the mental health of a mother and even a father of the unborn child. Thirty-five years ago, I became a pregnant teenager. As a teenager, I didn't feel I had much of a choice at the time. I can remember sitting in the doctor's office on what they called his abortion day, talking to some of the other patients who said it wasn't their first abortion. One lady said it was her fourth. I also remember going into that room and lying down. They give you headphones with some music. And in their way, keeps the sound down. The sound of the machine literally sucking life out of us. Nothing could have prepared me for what I went through that day or every day for the last thirty-five years. I was blessed with two children after marrying my husband. But I also anguished over several miscarriages for which I thought God was punishing me. I still deal with the guilt and remorse every day and hope to someday be able to meet that child. Abortion is being used as a form of birth control and a way to discard something we find inconvenient at the time. There are many alternatives to abortion. The first being education. Talk about sex. Talk about birth control. Don't make it a taboo. Stop it before you get to the place where you even have to think about a decision. The second is banning abortions. Don't gamble with the mental health of people. This is something you deal with forever. I didn't have a choice like my friend Jody Baker's parents to give my child up for adoption and know that my child would grow up and be healthy and happy because I killed her. I ask everyone to open your minds. This shouldn't ever be used as birth control. Life begins at conception. Don't allow these clinics to infest our community as drugs have. We, as adults and leaders, must not only keep our community safe, we must educate them. I implore you to make Russell County a safe haven of abortions. I know as an adult what I did as a child. As a parent, I educated my children and had open conversation. I hope no one has to go through what I have and what I still do. There's nothing that can be done for what I have and am still going through. I luckily have wonderful children, I have a wonderful husband, and wonderful friends. But please, don't let other mothers go through it. It's a heartbreak, it's heartbreaking. I still think about my child. I know it was good, and my heart cannot. So, I ask you, please, stand with us and make it known that Russell County is a safe place and that you and us and everyone else in this room is here for those people who don't have parents who are too late because it's not easy.
Arnold King.
There, members of the board, thank you for allowing me to come a moment and speak for you. I tremendously appreciate your work and your concern and your leadership in our community. I come tonight to just share, uh, that I'm a pastor of Bethel Baptist Church. Uh, heads and I moved here nearly ten years ago. It's been a wonderful experience of being in the environment of a community like this. A community that is close-knit, that has strong morals, that has convictions, that has love and concern for each other that we have seen expressed here tonight. I come to ask you that as you come to this memorable moment, that maybe you could reflect the words of between Esther that she had told to her many centuries ago. But maybe you have come for such a time as this. And I would ask you tonight to remember the words of, uh, the proverb where it says what God hates, that he hates the shedding of innocent blood. If abortion's not shedding innocent blood, I don't know what is. But I've raised the question a little bit higher tonight. I would ask you, as my friends have already alluded to, that perhaps we need to clarify this, that life does begin at conception and that we protect all life. And I'm at the age of my life now that I would say, brothers and sisters, we need to protect our elderly people. Euthanasia is also an issue. And when we say that, uh, Russell County is a haven, let's make sure that we include all people, that all life is important. Those that are disabled, those that are aged, those that have mental incapacities. I have friends tonight in nursing facilities that are great Christians, great people of God, that are not able to function. And I say their lives are precious tonight. And I'm glad in the eyes of God, we all are loved, we all are appreciated. And let us be people that this will not be a day of infamy, but this will be a day of incredible victory because we stand up for the lives of all people. Thank you.
Doctor Don Sambalja.
Madam Chair of the Board, thank you for allowing me to speak to you again. Brother Lester, as I look at you, I remember when COVID first came. You and Randy Williams and Sheriff Di asked me to come down and pray outside with y'all in the protection of all people in our county. I'm reminded again that the Word of God says, if you love me, keep my commandments. Well, if we love the Lord our God and we pray and we open these meetings in prayer, then we ought to be living according to what the Word of God says. The Word of God says that life begins at conception. And so, I would like to ask, who is responsible for taking the resolution that the citizens of this county was put forth by Brother Breeding and changing it into this document, which does not say that life begins at conception? Nor does this proposed document protect all of life that Brother King just removed it. I do not understand how we, the citizens of this county, and you who are elected to work on our behalf, can come before you, meeting after meeting, to have this given to us and to ask you to uphold this document that was originally written? And you bring back a one-piece page of paper that says absolutely nothing. Life begins at conception. I am here to encourage you to get rid of this piece of junk and to uphold the original resolution, which says through all of life. Again, one day, I am going to stand before the King of Kings and the Lord of Lords. And I am thankful I am going to be able to stand before him and say, I stood up for what his word said. Tonight, you also have the opportunity, because one day you are going to stand before him. This is not a time for talking out both sides of our mouth. This is a time for doing what is right, and in America, we need to do what is right. This is right, and this is wrong, and we need to stand for what is right because if we don't spell out what we believe and this does not cover it. Again, we realize that Sandy Hess said, the no piece of paper is going to be how she put it along. But if we're going to make a statement, if we're going to make a stand, then let's make a big statement, and then let's make a big stand and send a message to Governor Youngford. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Larry Hughes. Hughes?
My name's Larry Hughes. I reside at the District Five, particularly Hallow Drive. Uh, I want to thank the board. Mr. and Mrs. the, uh, Captain Ben, Senator, Attorney, all the people and the people who are trying to address our grievance with this board. Uh, this is provided by the Constitution. We have rights of the Constitution. And I'm going to concur with other things being said. I'm going to address it a little differently. As a Christian, as a father, as a mom that loves a child. Most people will call that, but I have. Blue and abortion. Not a good one because it's either type of life, whatever. But I am pro-life. And our quest, welcome forward, to pass a resolution concerning the county pro-life. It's a pro-life sanctuary. I understand that activism has minimal legal standing, however, does give an out voice to other parts of the county, or in this state and county. And I want the people to realize that we, we don't take, take a life right. Rather, we, we want to preserve the right to life of the innocent babies that's in the mother's womb this term. As well as we don't see. I ask you the following question. However, I know and I understand you do not answer or respond to the questions we ask you when we ask you. Have you taken your oath to office? Have you signed your oath and it's never filed? I want to remind you what your oath is. Your oath says, according to Virginia Code, Chapter One, Title Forty-Nine, Section One, every person for any, on the discharge of any functions of the officer or the co-worker shall take and subscribe to the following oath. I do solemnly swear, or affirm, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Virginia, in all respects. And I will faithfully and personally discharge the duties incurred upon me as a member of the board, so far as according to the best of my ability, so help me God. To further describe within Title Fifteen, that's fifteen point two dash fifteen point two, every elected county officer, unless otherwise provided below, or before the date at which his term of office begins, shall qualify but take the oath described by the said, Section Twenty-Nine, Title Four-Five, and give bond if that is required by law. The clerk of the county shall report the same order booked. As such, I have not, if you have not subscribed or given your signed pledge, you should request to recuse yourself until it is given. If you don't have a right vote, you can not sign it. And I'm not going to ask you to say it right now, but I won't visit you. I want to see your signed oath, when it was signed. I remind you though, I'll take your swear or affirm to uphold both the United States and Virginia Constitution. Replacing the oath is a pledge by all to abide by all facts and applicable laws. So, again, referring to the Constitution of Virginia, Article One, Bill of Rights, Section One provides us that all men of nature are equally free and independent, have certain inherent rights. Name it, the enjoyment of life. That's the enjoyment of life for everyone. All right, Section Two, people, the source of power. This section states that all power is vested in and consequent derived from the people. That the masters are the trustees in service, that's you. The trustees in service are minimal to them, that's the figure. The government is or are to be instituted for the common benefit, protection, and security of the people, nation, or community capable of producing the greatest degree of happiness and safety in its most effective secured against the danger of maladministration. And whenever any government shall be found inadequate or contrary to the purpose a majority of the community hath and is dutable, inalienable, and indivisible right to reform, alter, or abolish it in such a matter as shall be judged most conducted by the public will. And so much, as a Himalayan person, I understand our government is a democratic republic. That being the ideal which combines both republicism and democracy. This means people can take part in the decisions that affects what the community is run. There is no monarchy here in modern. This is a democracy, a republic. So, I present to each of you on the board, this is your people. This is your constituents. This is your citizens. And their public will is the majority. You must at all times be a member of them. That's the Constitution, that's law. As one of the men of this community, and I'm sure quite a few others, I demand, I proclaim a need, by requirement and my entitlements, to my inherent and legal rights are used to abide by the Constitution and not to trespass said domain. Your signed oath is a legal binding contract that you, the constituents, with the constituents, and you must follow the will of the people, or you may face legal suing litigation. Your response to the man will be judged accordingly. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. We have a copy. Would you like part of this to be in the record? I will see that, that is outside. Next, we have Adam Hess. Hess?
Hello, my name is Adam Hess, um, Sword Creek. I'm speaking on behalf of the high school of the county of Russell County in support of Russell County being a pro-life sanctuary county. I think it'll be a great thing for the county and like to other counties to adopt the same law. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Mr. Stephen Dammer?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Pastor Stephen Dammer. I'm from Sword Creek. And, uh, I talked to you at the last meeting for unborn babies. I don't, I don't see how anybody, whether in politics, life, could justify the taking of a life of an unborn child. I never thought I'd see a time in Russell County where you'd have one set of adults standing up against another set of adults over unborn babies, their bodies. And God gave us each and every child that's ever been born, each and every child that's ever been aborted now with the will of God, or it would have ever been born. And, uh, I just want to read something I wrote down. It said, uh, these killed, killed, murdered unborn babies will never have the chance to say, I love you, Mom, I love you, Dad. Its family will never get to hear it, say praise you, Jesus, or see it and go down and fumble. All the birthdays will never be celebrated, all in the name of politics or women's right to choose. Kill the baby, the doctor and the mom and politicians say, so they can go play and not the child. No first haircuts, no first feast and trips, no little ponytails, no dress-up things. In Psalms one twenty-seven, it said, lo, children are heritage of the Lord, and the fruit of the womb is his reward. I would hate to be responsible for going in and taking something out that God put in for life. And just because you voted it, don't make your hands clean. If you vote to legalize abortion, your hands is just as dirty as the doctor that performed the abortion. I stand for life, whether it's at conception or until they die. Life begins at conception. It's not a fetus. It's not a blob. It's a baby. The heartbeat begins just as soon as the baby's born. I think that of every adult ought to stand for every unborn baby that's not had a chance to be where you want to sit in the seats that you're sitting in, to get up and sing the songs. Uh, you asked a question, how many listen to country music? I don't. But just a while ago, whenever you brought those people in and you recognized them, the baby that got aborted today will never be recognized. It'll never be applauded for anything that it ever done. Mister Di was my sixth grade teacher. The boy and girl never get to have a sixth grade teacher because they got killed. Because some- somebody didn't want to take responsibility for their actions. I know that sometimes things happen when women get raped or incest. If you don't want the baby, put it up for adoption. Somebody will take that baby. But outside of rape, and I'm not sentenced to be mean, if you don't want a baby, be abstinent. Don't go out and take a chance to make something that you want to kill because that baby's got a right to life. And I thank Jesus Christ for mine and for all of y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Dambler. Next on my list is Scotty Perkins. Perkins?
Scotty Perkins, Salt Creek. Born, not aborted, nineteen sixty-four. At that time, my mother and dad, they didn't take me to church. They didn't teach me the ways of the Lord. But they had no thought that it'd be okay to murder me because God gave me life. He chose to put me into this world. He gave me a purpose. He called me and he chose me. He chose me to show the world his blessings to me. I'm just a simple man from Salt Creek that nobody but the Lord really knows. And he knows all about me. He knows my failures. He knows my success. He knows my thoughts. He knows the intent of my heart. He knows my love. I didn't write down comments. I come in and sit down in the press to speak from the heart tonight because I've noticed a common theme. Whenever God's law and man's law seems to cross, in Russell County, when we come before this Board and the School Board, it seems like the first response always is, well, the county attorney needs to check into this and see the legalities of what you want to do and see if we are allowed. You know, they arrested Peter and the apostle, put him in jail, prison, they said. And then whenever the Holy Spirit released them and told them to go into the temple and teach the people, whenever they brought them out, they said, did not be strictly commanded you not to teach in this name? And then Peter and the other apostle said, we ought to obey God and not men. We have an opportunity. This is the most important vote in the history of Russell County. There has never been one in the history of our county that's more important than this vote on this resolution. And respectfully, it doesn't matter. I appreciate the long hours and the hard work that the county attorney puts in to try to merge God's law with man's law, but we ought to obey God. At some point, we have to use the life that God gave us and accomplish the purpose he put us here for. Each one of us that's here tonight, God chose for us to be here. He chose for each one of you to be sitting in the seat that you are tonight in this most important vote in the history of Russell County. And he has raised you up for this purpose. And he believes that you have it in your heart to follow his law and not man's law. It doesn't matter what man wants. What matters is what God wants. We tonight have an opportunity here to show the world that God's right. When you murder a baby, and they call it abortion, but it is murder. That's an ugly word, but that's what it is. I was not murdered, so I get to come tonight and speak. I got a chance to see why God chose to put me into this world. A murdered baby has no chance to see what their purpose was, for God put life in his body. Tonight, I pray that God will move upon each one of your hearts and you'll do what's right in God's eyes. Forget what man says. I know, I know, oh, well, we might be, uh, have legal... I'm sorry, I can't look at this anymore. I appreciate what you all tried to do, but I don't appreciate what this is because this is compromise. This, if you vote on this, it's a flawed vote because this does not satisfy God's requirement for life. May God bless his children. God will bless his children, and I pray that God will bless you. And I believe that you will make the right decision because God put you here for this time, for this purpose. Amen.
Tim Whited?
I am from the Seagull, the Old West area, pastor of the Church. And we simply stand before you today. There's been so much that's already been said, so much that's already been brought before us, before you, as the Board. Really, this is not a, should not be a political issue at all, to stand, to debate whether life is precious or whether life is not. So you all, here tonight, you represent your districts, you all will have a vote. I know the last time we was here, we had some that stood, some that did not stand, some that stood later. But tonight, the vote is really going to be in your hands, where your heart is. How much you love God, how you see things, is what's really going to shine through. It's not about a political party. It's not about affiliation. It's about what simply, as these other brethren have said, what's doing right in the eyes of God. We understand what this resolution is. And as they've already said, this that's been brought to us, really, it is a shame. We want you, you should vote on the original version that was brought forward. We all agree, I hope we all agree, that life is at conception in the womb. We all understand that. It's nothing that we should stand around and even try to debate, to convince you all. All of you all, were raised in the same county I hope that I was raised in, right here in Russell County, a good Christian county where we was taught the truth. Do what is right. Make the right vote. Throw the, throw the one you brought away, vote in the one that was brought forward when we were here last year. Do what is right. You're going to give an account. I really feel like saying that tonight. I didn't premeditate what I would say, write anything down. I just prayed and said, God, give me the right words to say. But you know, you'll give an account unto us, you will, what you vote tonight. You'll give an account to everybody sitting out here in this pew, sitting out here in these seats. But you know what? Even after that, you're going to give an account to Almighty God. Where you put your amen, where you put your signature, where you put your raise of hand, God will judge you. Know that it is a fearful thing to fall into the hands of a living God. Amen. Vengeance is mine, said the Lord, and we will repay. Do good, we've got promise. But if we go out here and we do wrong, and we make the wrong choices, no, I think you will stand and you will give an account before God. Do what's right. Look at all these houses, got the white shirts on, trying to show as much as we can that we're standing for life. Would y'all stand? Can we do that? Showing we believe in life. We believe in life. We believe in life. Do what's right.
Thank you, Mr. Whited. Cody Jackson?
Good evening, members of the Board, as always. Thank you for allowing us all time to speak. My name is Cody Jackson, and I am a resident of the Cleveland area, the county, and co-coordinator for the Russell County Christian Coalition. I am here again to encourage you to adopt the resolution declaring Russell County to be a pro-life sanctuary. Let me make clear, the original is what I'm encouraging you to adopt that defines life at conception, and as many have stated, talks about euthanasia and the like. Our coalition has a petition for this resolution that we'll be submitting that now has garnered over eleven hundred signatures of support. We believe this will give courage to surrounding counties to do the same. It's in the message to our state legislature that we stand for life. Recently, the Blacksburg City Council adopted a resolution to support abortion. So if there was ever a time to take a stand, it is certainly right now. It's interesting that this was a question that come up. There are many passionate opinions on both sides of this debate, but the real question that all of us must ask ourselves is, when does life begin? The pro-life position can answer this question logically and scientifically, while abortion supporters simply cannot. If life begins at conception, then ending that life intentionally is murder, end of story. The science of biology typically defines life as requiring eight characteristics: order, sensitivity or response to the environment, reproduction, growth and development, regulation, homeostasis, and energy process. A child at conception has all of these characteristics, including its own distinct DNA separating it as an individual life apart from the mother. As soon as conception begins, there is a complete harmonious order as the fertilized egg begins using all of its cell machinery to achieve its goal of growth and development. It responds to the environment by moving immediately, beginning a journey through the fallopian tube of the uterus where it will interact with the uterine wall to implant. This process is well-regulated, with each new cell reproduced from the original, working in consort to differentiate and grow into all of the future organs and bodily systems. This process is energy-intensive and will continue to be over the entirety of gestation as the cells process energy to accomplish their work. And of course, from the first cell to the billions that make up the newborn, the inside of all cells is the very definition of homeostasis. No other conclusion can be reached but that it is a new and distinct life and therefore worthy of protection. I also want to relay a message from Mr. Josh Hetzler, who is from the Founding Freedoms Law Center. Katie may remember him from last year, who is currently working with Bristol to help draft an ordinance to hopefully prevent the moving of abortion clinic within their city. He and his colleagues at Founding Freedoms would love to work with each of you to draft an ordinance unique to Russell County and its current laws to make good on the resolution that we are asking you to pass. As Chairwoman Wallace stated her support for such a measure, I encourage you to respond as he reaches out to lend his support. If all of you wish to continue to run on a pro-life platform, this is your time to take a stand and be on the right side of history by declaring our county a sanctuary for the unborn. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Michael Saunders?
My name is Michael Saunders, and I reside in Hansonville. I'd like to thank the Board for allowing me this opportunity to speak so my concerns may be heard. Full disclosure, I believe in God, and I'm a follower of Christ. However, I suspect there may be individuals amongst us tonight that do not share my beliefs in God. Therefore, to reach the hearts and minds of those individuals, I pray my comments from a secular world perspective should not be misinterpreted as a weakness in my faith, nor a lack of obedience towards God. A common talking point we often hear is that abortion is health care. However, when one studies the long-term effects of receiving abortion, it should cause one to question the validity of that statement. The following health care information I'm about to speak of was obtained from peer-reviewed published work entitled Medical Assumptions at the Foundation Roe v. Wade and Its Implication for Women's Health. This scholarly work was written by Clark Forsythe and was published in the fall of 2014 printing of Issues in Law and Medicine. The maternal mortality data collected in the U.S. is flawed and unreliable. There are only two organizations that collect abortion data. They are the Center for Disease Control and a private group called the Alan Gutman Institute. In the United States, the reporting of abortion data is 100% voluntary. Therefore, it can be assumed that complications resulting from an abortion procedure are underreported in the United States. To obtain more accurate information, data from other countries needs to be utilized. A 2,000 study utilizing data from Ireland, a 2,000 study using data from Denmark, and another 2,013 study using data from Mexico, found that those three countries which all prohibit abortions have lower maternal mortality rates and better women's health trends when compared to countries that have widely accessible abortions. There are at least ninety-nine international peer-reviewed studies that have found an increased risk of mental trauma after an abortion. A September 2011 study published in the British Journal of Psychiatry reported moderate to high increased mental health problems after an abortion. At least thirty-three peer-reviewed studies have found an increase in the risk of breast cancer after an induced abortion. China's one child policy enacted in 1980 and ended in 2016 resulted in a country where an immense number of abortions were performed annually. Often, women received multiple abortions over many years. The 2013 Pyongyang study from China found that one prior induced abortion increased the risk of breast cancer by forty-four percent. Two induced abortions increases the risk of breast cancer by seventy-six percent. And three induced abortions increased the risk of breast cancer by eighty-nine percent. These statistics alone should be enough to see that abortion is not health care. Abortion places the long-term health of an expected mother at risk. A second common talking point that proponents of abortion state is my body, my choice. But I ask, is it only the woman's body that is affected when an abortion is performed? As individuals, we each have unique DNA that serves as a blueprint for us as individuals. Each individual's DNA consists of fifty percent from the mother and fifty percent from the father. Using DNA technology, the criminal justice system can identify individuals, use and convict those individuals of crime, as well as it can use it to free individuals that were incorrectly convicted for crimes they did not commit. As such, DNA is a scientifically sound and accepted technology. Additionally, DNA is a tool that can be used to identify individual body pieces and parts. Sadly, this technology has been used on the battlefield to piece together the burial remains of our service members that have fallen on foreign battlefields. Using DNA technology, severed limbs can be matched to the torso from which it was separated. When an abortion is performed, the secular world refers to the byproduct of the abortion as mere tissue. Yet if a DNA analysis were formed on this tissue, two distinct DNA structures would be found. One DNA structure would match the mother from remnants of her blood, but there will also be a second distinctly different DNA found. That DNA would be from the individual that was created at the moment of conception and it was just killed as a result of the abortion procedure. In 2012, the Commonwealth of Virginia enacted laws concerning wrongful fetal deaths in Virginia. In essence, this expansion of the law recognizes unborn babies as protectable beings by law. In other words, fetuses were granted personhood and are protected by the same laws that protect all people. Sadly, Virginia also passed an exception, Article Five, eight point oh one dash fifty, Section B, states nothing in this section shall be construed to create a cause of action for fetal death against the natural mother of a fetus. In other words, while the child is a person, its mother can still kill the child as long as it's in the womb. As citizens of Russell County, here tonight, let us honor the personhood of the unborn. May we be their voice and advocate on their behalf to protect their rights as persons. Where the Commonwealth of Virginia has flawed and allowed a legal exemption for a mother to summarily execute the unborn, let it be here and tonight that Russell County corrects that injustice. As leaders, we expect you to do just that and be leaders. Do not follow the failed policies of the Commonwealth of Virginia. Just as Richmond drives its power for the citizens of Virginia, you, as our local elected leaders, drive your power as leaders through the citizens of this great county. We respectfully ask our leaders tonight to act upon the wishes of the citizens of this county and use the power that's been entrusted to you to pass the original resolution as written to make Russell County a pro-life county. Thank you.
I think it's Gordon, Gordon, Gordon R., Gordon Gorn X. I apologize, Dan. I'm not doing very well. I apologize.
I am Gordon Galada. I live right down the street as I testified last time. Eleven forty-five East Main Street. It's a annex, a dog, it's right across the street. Now, you're wondering why I'm carrying this. I'm eighty-three years old. Now, I did not sign a testimony. I don't know how that got to be that way. I've listened to the testimony.
You're right there.
I just signed my name. And you sign your name when you come in? I thought I was just signing to say, hey, I'm here, okay? I testified last time about my son who was an abortion baby. Yeah, when they, when he was born, the doctor, I said his name, Charles Norris, Chuck Norris, and he handed the baby to the nurse and said, dispose of this. and he handed the baby to the nurse and said, dispose of this baby and the afterbirth. She wouldn't do it. He's never missed breath. He's 220 pounds. He's got two beautiful children. I don't know. I think you did this last time. I think that says it all. But to me, everyone has a right to life. He had life. If he hadn't, where would I be? I wouldn't have two more grandchildren. And that, that would be a crime for me. So anyhow, I just wanted to say thank you. I didn't know I was supposed, I didn't know I signed up just yet, but I did. And that's good enough, isn't it?
Thank you. You were meant to do so.
All right. Thank you.
Kenny Bowlin? Kenny Bowlin?
Again, thank you for allowing me to speak for the second time. I did speak last meeting and I appreciate the work that you do. Thank you, board members, chairman, and thank you for the work that you do serving the county. Again, I just want to come before you with a little bit of practical experience, just as a reminder of why we do not want this in Russell County. And I do want to encourage you, as others have emphasized, that you adopt the original resolution. Take the strongest stand that you can. Bible says Satan marches around like a roaring lion, seeking whom he may devour. He's going to march around with strength. We need the strongest resolution that we can possibly have. I want to share with you a little bit of this practical experience that I've had. I told you last time that the abortion clinic in Bristol has moved, as they announced on the news from State and Slaughter Street into Virginia. So they are seeking places to move and set these up as there are places in Virginia. I think our former governor saw this coming and allowed for it. I want to share some of the things that we have observed as we went out to State and Slaughter Street to appeal to women to not murder their babies. And some of the things that we did observe were cyberbullying on Facebook and other means for those that were coming and doing the outreach. Certain individuals would come and pray, or they would read God's word. Certain occasions, they would preach, or they would just simply reach out, offer alternatives. We saw individuals knocked to the ground. We saw individuals bullied by abortion clinic workers. We have seen escorts hired by the abortion clinic threaten myself and others that did outreach at the abortion clinics. And this is done to protect their income. This is done, this is not a, this is not healthcare. This is not done for those individuals that their life is in danger. It is done for those that get out of the car, walk into the clinic, and choose this as an elective surgery. This is not healthcare. As the first lady that spoke said, this is done as, well, simply as take care of something that's inconvenient. We've watched as female inmates have been brought from North Carolina, Pennsylvania, Tennessee, driven around to the back door in secret by guards, bringing those female inmates in. You can use your imagination on those. This is again to protect income or personal embarrassment. This again is not healthcare. We've even heard women say, when offered the option of abortion, I would rather, or adoption, excuse me, I would rather have the abortion. It's ought to shudder, send shudders down our spine as the option to keep the baby and see, as Joni has shared, to see that child grow up in a loving home, these women have declared, I would rather have the abortion. This is a darkness we do not want in Russell County. This is a darkness we do not want. The original resolution needs to be passed. Let me assure you, I promise you, I have seen these things. I have seen this darkness. I have felt the evil of Satan outside of that abortion clinic as I watched individuals scream and yell and protect essentially their income or protect just simply their matter of convenience. I appeal to you, adopt the original resolution. As Pastor Don challenged you, don't compromise with a weaker resolution. Don't try to please both sides. Jesus said, you cannot love or serve two masters. You'll love one and you'll hate the other. He didn't say there was any middle ground. There is no middle ground in this. Can't please both sides. Stand strong. Stand against the dark evil of baby murder. We can name all kinds of stats, talk about science, et cetera. But Jesus said, if you deny me before men, then I will deny you before my Father. Question is denied, is, do you believe at the end of the meeting, when you take the vote, what you said at the beginning of the meeting? Do you believe the prayer that was said at the beginning of the meeting? Do you believe the things, or is the mere prayer itself just a habit? Or are you praying to the true God that you truly follow? Because he said, if you love me, you'll keep my commands. He said, thou shalt not murder. And I pray that the murder of babies, this evil, I know this is a resolution. It's not a law. It's not binding. But it is a statement to Almighty God that I won't have it. That we stand with the Lord Jesus Christ, who one day you will go before and give an account for every jot and every tittle and everything, including your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mike Dahonaker?
Also a board member of the Russell County Christian Coalition. And they have much more to say other than we just need to put the original resolution out, vote on it tonight, get it to be passed. Washington County, Tassel County, Buchanan, Dixon, Carroll, Wise, just mention those six counties. It's already reached out to Russell County Christian Coalition. They said their eyes is on this meeting tonight. Actually, a preacher from Dixon County said they want to adopt the exact same resolution that Russell County passes. And the one he's talking about is the one that Mr. Breed put forth last month. As he told him, he said, I'm hoping it'll take like three minutes tonight. We just need to vote on the original resolution, get this thing passed. And after this, we need to work on ordinance. We need whatever we can to show that we stand as a pro-life sanctuary overall.
Thank you, Mr. Dahonaker.
My name is Joni Baker. I'm Lebanon, Residency Freedoms District. And first of all, I want to thank you all for allowing us this opportunity for everyone to come here tonight. And my story, some of y'all have heard. I was in foster care and I was adopted. Thank God that I had a biological mother that was pro-life, and she stepped out on faith. And she sent me into foster care and I got adopted by two strong Christian parents that also taught me the Word of God. The, the things that Michelle Vance had said and this young man right here standing up, this is what we should be doing in Russell County and all over Southwest Virginia. We have led the way in this county, and I've stood with most people in here with our pro-second amendment and everything else from overturning the elections that needed to be done. Now, I've been in law enforcement for over 20 years, and we go by a thing called protecting certain. If we can't stand up and take a bold stand for the unborn, who are we protecting and who are we serving just ourselves? We stand up for the veterans. We stand up for the elderly. We do all these things for people. Mental health crisis, we get involved, but we need to be speaking for the unborn, be the voice of the voice. I had a distinct opportunity to meet Governor Ralph North. I said, Lord, I don't know why you provided this opportunity, but you open the door, I'll walk through. So I spoke with the governor at the time, didn't know Yonkin's name. I showed him a picture of my wife pregnant with our little girl, Belle Rose, back there. He said, you have a beautiful wife. I said, that's not why I showed you that. I already knew that. I said, this is my child. I said, here's the ultrasound. I said, and this is her after she was born. I said, how we comfort our children is by giving them what they need, that is love and comfort, and God will make a way. But we have to stand up for people like Michelle Bowden to stand here and tell her story. We have to, or what are we doing? We're just playing games. We need to make sure that Russell County continues to lead the way. And we lead the government. The government doesn't need to be leading us. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Jonathan Edwards?
I don't think you want to be here tonight, but I thought it's important enough to come. I'm a father of two. I don't feel like I should have to come out here, take time away from my wife and kids. On something as simple as this, this is a free throw. I don't mean disrespect. I'm very passionate about this. But I'm a father of two. I remember they're all present in five weeks. They didn't have their mothers being part. They had, they were being part. My doctor was going to see, but I do know this. My son, before I walked out tonight, said, Daddy, why are you going? I said, I'm going to the government center. He said, what's that? And I said, well, I don't really want to go, but I said, I've got to go to do anything I can do to make sure it's done right. He don't understand that, but one day he will. And I hope each and every one of you hear God, God Almighty, more than you hear mine. People stole Bible verses I was going to use, so I'm going to do some other ones. But anyway, this is, this is out of Jeremiah chapter one. It's verse five. We've talked about life beginning at conception. Here's what God says. Before I formed you in the womb, I knew you. Before you were born, I concentrated, I pointed you a prophet to the nations. Know what else he says in his word? It says this, after the first murder, Genesis chapter four. God comes to Cain after he murdered his brother Abel, and always says, your brother's blood cries out to me from the ground. I looked up the stat earlier today. We have murdered 50 million babies in this country. Think your boy don't pray out to God Almighty. He knows. He knows. And I want to applaud the great woman that came up here. I would say to anybody that's had an abortion, God loves you. He loves me despite what I am, a sinner, saved by the grace, none of my own merits. And, and God Almighty provided a way that you can be reconciled in him so you don't have to get his justice. There's no social, social justice. There's no environmental justice. There's just justice and God is the author of it. And he, he will make a way. So the, often the issue of rape comes up. Well, obviously, I'm not a woman, but I've got, I've got an aunt that's raped early nights. And thank God, we didn't know it for decades, not till recently. And thank God she elected to have that baby. I don't call it material or whatever I call it because and he deserved a shot at life as much as anybody else did. He did. And the difference, the difference between somebody who says, oh, I'm pro-choice or, or I'm pro-life, I don't believe the child should pay the penalty for the father's sins. I believe we ought to have a justice system that, that, that man's held accountable, preferably castrated or killed, executed. But anyway, I'm going, I'm going to give one more Bible verse, actually a few more. But it's, it's in verse, a lot has been said of accountability, and I don't stand up here condemning anyone. I'm just, as I say, a sinner saved by grace. This politics, that's a man's game, but I'm going to come with what God says. It's First John, chapter three. I'll start in verse six. No one who abides in him keeps on sinning. No one who keeps on sinning has either seen him or known him. Little children, let no one deceive you. I want you to listen to this part. It doesn't say repentance. It doesn't say that sinless perfection. You may fall into sin as a Christian, but you're not going to stand your life until, listen to this part. Whoever practices righteousness is righteous, as he is righteous. Whoever makes a practice sinning from the beginning, the reason the Son of God appears to destroy the works of the devil, for the devil's been sinning from the beginning. That, that word practice means it's a calculated decision. You don't fall into it. It didn't happen. It's calculated. And I pray you fear God enough to practice what he says and not go with the way of the world. We said a prayer before we came in here, and then we said, one nation under God. The hypocrisy of this nation is we've taken them out of everything except for hundred-dollar bills or money. That's, that's idolatry, okay? That's what it is. But if, anyway, I could just keep going. But the point is, I, I hope you've got enough spine and enough conviction to pass a resolution with some teeth or some potential for some teeth. Maybe this is a good starting point. I don't want to have to drive by a location one day and tell my son, Daddy, what's that? Well, son, this is what they do. I don't want to have to tell him that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Lynn Head?
My name's Lynn Head. I'm from Sword Creek, Virginia. And I'd like to start off by reading a Bible verse. It says, he is the rock. It's in Deuteronomy, chapter 32, verse four. He is a rock. His work is perfect, for all his ways is justice. A God of truth without injustice, righteous and upright in he is he. Now, some reason or another, you all think you're between a rock and hard place. Probably you're compromised on the resolution that Steve Breeding drawled up, and we love that resolution. It had a lot of teeth. It had a lot of protection in our pro-life conception all the way through the whole people. What I'm here to tell you tonight is you can get out between that rock and that hard place and climb upon the rock. The rock is the Word of God. Stand upon the rock and do what's right tonight. And I said, first resolution that was put before you. And let's make Russell County stand out and shine like a beacon of light into this lost and dying world. I also heard from a, an alliance, a lawyer from an alliance, that you cannot be sued for a resolution. He said, it's impossible for you to be sued for a resolution. That's why we use resolutions. So please, take the first draft that Mr. Breeding brought to you. Let's pass that tonight. Let's make Russell County a beacon of light into this state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horace. Shelley Reynolds? Shelby Reynolds?
There's not too much to say that hasn't already been said, and I too say pro-life. I've got four wonderful grandchildren, and I praise God that they didn't take their lives. And I've got to enjoy them and play with them, and I've got two little ones of the four at home with me right now. They have brought the story of my life. And I would be devastated to know that my daughter chose to take her life and committed murder. That's exactly what it is. I praise God that I've shown enough. I praise God that I shone an end to her, that she chose life for my babies. And I'm like everybody else, I think you all would, she should take her life. Stand on the word. God be pleased me, me too.
Chloe Reynolds. Okay, that ends, those that signed up to speak tonight. I will offer you an opportunity. I know the hour is getting late, and she knows all these important matters that she purpose to get here and to see. So if there's anyone else here that has not had a little thing to say, all accept them, testimony now. Give your name and address.
My name's Stu Hubbard, I'm from Sword Creek. I don't care who I lay, but I just want to stand and say I'm pro-life. I think the Lord's for the life that he blessed me with. Four daughters, I've got one grandson. I have one that, like I said last time, didn't make it, but it's wrapped in the arms of Jesus. And I can't wait to see it. See it and look upon his little face and get a meeting day, but the Bible tells us that, you know, if everybody that has spoken, that is here, whether they've spoken or not, they're, they're letting their voice be made known. And they're not letting the stones cry out in their place. But it, it, "He said unto them, If thou shall hold thy peace, the stones will immediately cry out." I hope you don't let the stones cry out in your place, and that you will stand on the word of God, and you will, you will, you will stand strong and, and look to him, the author and the finisher of your faith. He holds that in your hand, in his hands. And I beg you to, to make this a start for our county.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Jody Shelton, I live in the Sword Creek area in Martin Valley. I appreciate y'all having this here tonight and listening to what we got to say. Back a month or so ago, Mr. Breeding sent out the draft that he worked on. I read it, it was the greatest thing that I've ever read. I think I was sitting back, I thought, I said, "That's a great job, that's exactly what we need." Compromise, that's what's wrong with our county, our state, our country today, is that we've been just too willing to compromise every little thing to appease everyone coming and going, and we don't stand on our standards. You know, I remember years and years ago, my mom or dad said, "If you do that, you're going to get whipped." That's exactly what happened, was I'd get whipped. And, you know, we, we've let go, we've let down those standards, our schools have, our community has. We don't need to though. I think we need to pass the resolution that Steve wrote up, it's got teeth in it. I thought, I heard from Glenn there a few weeks ago, said, you know, there's nothing that they can do to you over a resolution. But I think we don't need to stop this resolution. Once we get this resolution in place, and I think everybody's going to vote for it tonight, I feel confident in that. Otherwise, I don't think it would be up on the board with the names wrote down there. But once the resolution's passed, I really think we need to start working on the ordinance. This is not something that we need to say, "All right, we got the resolution, we're done now." We have to come back in a month or so and work on this ordinance, and that's what we need to do. Supreme Court has already defeated Roe v. Wade, so it's no good no more. Let's not, let's not worry about what our state says, what the state says we have to do. Let's worry about what Russell County wants to do, what we want to stand on. Everybody's already here, everybody's already told you, we'll back you. If you do what's right, do what we think's right, we're going to back you a hundred percent. If not, we're going to be here voicing our displeasure. But I think, I think we got a good start on this, we don't need to, we don't need to let up. I really think we need to pass the original resolution. Life does begin at conception. Part B, it's a little vague. But I thank y'all for your time, let's pass the original resolution, let's work on this ordinance. Let's make Russell County the county that everybody in Virginia wants to be living in. Not just the girl on the other side of the state. We can do that, we stand with y'all, y'all do the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton.
Thank y'all for allowing us to speak tonight. It's Kirby Meadows from Long Lake. I told a lot of people I want to speak, that y'all, y'all want to be there on some things, and I had to speak tonight. I'd ask each one of you, as more than you, if you have children, have grandchildren, like, think about, have they been aborted? What have they been in your lives? If they've been aborted, what would you have? Think about that. Also, I would ask you to think about where you're going. There's going to be an answering day, what you answer for. Every one of us are going to answer what we do. Thank God he placed by my word, I don't have to go that awful place here. And I can tell you, I can read in my word, the word of God, it says it's awful place. And tonight I challenge each one of you, when it comes time to vote, don't abstain, don't back down. Have a backbone and stand for what you believe in, what you know is right, in your heart, not what somebody's told you they want you to do. Stand for what you know is right. Because I want to tell you, all of y'all here, I think everyone who's got children, if some have grandchildren. Steve, I want to thank you for the draft that you brought out, that's exactly what we need. We need the original draft, and also do work on the ordinance. I was told by an attorney that the county, the things in place for themselves, that they have to go by. And not if we put it in, the resolution, like I said, it's not legal binding, but it is as fair. If you do an ordinance, that is legal binding. And you can do an ordinance for Russell County. You have a right to do that. I worked on the planning this year, I've done it twenty-seven years. We've done ordinances then. People told us, you know, you can't do that, the state told us, if you want to do an ordinance for Russell County, specifically for Russell County, you can do that, that ordinance is binding for Russell County. So tonight, do what's in your heart, what you know is right. And I think every one of you sitting there tonight knows exactly what's right. These people know what's right, they wouldn't be here tonight if they didn't know what's right. We were raised, I think every one of y'all probably were raised in a Christian family background, somewhere along the way. Tonight I challenge you to do what's right, stand up for what you know is right. Don't back down because you're afraid you're going to make somebody mad, let them get mad. They got mad at Christ, they hated him, and he said in his word, "They would hate us because they hated him." And you know what, tonight, that's fine, let them hate me, God loves me, and I love him. Tonight, that little baby has no voice. And I can tell you something, tonight, I worked at a funeral home, I've worked around forty years in a funeral home. I picked up babies that I could carry in my hand, in a washcloth, less than six ounces. That baby was fully formed, ten toes, ten fingers, head, eyes, all four of them. That baby was premature, wasn't even carried six weeks. That tells me life began quite a while before that, it began at conception, because they've had the baby. Don't think it, don't warn their, I picked them up the same day I picked that baby up, I picked a hundred-three-year-old lady, that's going to be strange. But you know what, God gave that baby life, for some reason he saw her take it out. Let God be the one that makes the decision, take it out, or leave it. That should not be here to see it, it should be left there and be born. And I have picked up babies, some of the people here, their families have had babies die, either before birth or that would love to adopt their baby, that somebody could put for adoption. I know it's terrible. Like, I was living at the hospital when I picked up a baby. That queen, that passed away. They were little, they weighed around less than a pound each. You know what, that was still alive. When I picked up that little baby, that worn a weight, less than six ounces, and carried in my hand in a washcloth to take back to the funeral home from the burial. That baby was fully formed, that was alive, until God saw it, he took it out. That's God's decision, we're not God, we don't need to play God, we need to let him do what he sees fit to do. And tonight, if you vote to uphold this pro-life sanctuary, you're voting for God in that way, because you're backing him. But you know what, if you vote against it tonight, you're voting to let people commit murder right here in our own county. And the Bible says, one commandment says, "Thou shalt not kill." It don't say, "Thou shalt not kill because this, because that." It says, "Thou shalt not kill." It's not true. So we should not be killing babies, killing anybody. And I believe in taking care of our people from before birth to their death, as was said earlier. We need to take care of them. If we don't take care of them, we may be there one of these days, they'll be, nobody takes care of them, we need to look at that. And tonight, each one of you, I would challenge you, to vote in your heart what you know is right, and I think you know what's right. And don't abstain and don't back down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meadows, anyone else?
Stu Hubbard, I don't like publicly talking too much, which definitely put on my heart to say something. I've fought the last four years of my life to get an education where I can do my dream job, which is a labor delivery nurse. But I thank God that I've been able to be in that field since about February. I remember my first birth, and I don't believe anybody in the room had a dry eye because this life is such a beautiful thing. I remember the baby coming out, and you take in its first breath, and it's just, you can feel God in that room, because God is that life. And I also remember last week, I had two really sad cases. I lost a little baby, it was nineteen weeks. It come out, you know, we, we're in charge of getting it ready and everything, and like Kirby said, they have their little toes, they have ten toes and ten fingers, the little all its face, it's beautiful, it's beautiful. Life's there just as it is when it comes to term and it's born. And we've turned a blind eye to these suboxone clinics that's come in, and I, I really hope you don't turn a blind eye to this. The other little baby I was taking care of, the mom was on suboxone, that's supposed to help and pick them off the drugs, but they sadly don't use it like that. The baby was sitting and withdrawing, and it was so tight, it couldn't move, and it was, you know, seizing and tremoring because of these drugs that we've let sleep in. So I ask you tonight, as a nurse and as a child of God, to please pass this resolution to protect these babies.
Thank you, Ms. Hubbard.
I'm Wayne Ho from Sword Creek. I'll get to know you real life, yes, but I'll be brief, I just want to say that the resolution that we saw last month, the one we're seeing tonight, is pretty different. I just seen this new one, revised one, sometime this afternoon, it's quite different from the original one. And I'm thinking, well, that's saying a lot of what we want. Maybe that's not too bad, and then Pastor Don got up here and some other of these fine citizens and pointed out some things that this one doesn't have. So I would like to encourage you to pass the original one from last month. Here tonight, make our county a sanctuary, pro-life county for all life from conception to death.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard.
Delina Buber. I'm going to approach this from a different perspective from a businesswoman who has been a woman in that world for quite some time. So I rub shoulders with lots of folks that I recall totally opposite of all of us. And I would say that I agree with every single thing that has been said tonight. Unfortunately, there are so many in our world that are deceived. They are totally deceived as women, but we need to think of this even further. When I see the faces as people have been speaking, because I serve a lot of people. There is nothing else that matters, it is too silent. There is no gray areas, there is no in-between. There is no, let's choose, it's either right or wrong, it's either good or bad, it's either black or white, it's not gray. And what I have seen in this secular world that we live in now, is there's too much gray, there's too much compromise. And businesswomen need to help all of these young women come to grips with some sanity, because it is not about health, it is not about our bodies. They have totally propagandized our women, our youth, our young people, and convinced them that this is a good thing, to kill children. So I'm going to take it one step deeper. We love our Lord and we understand that. But do we really understand what is truly behind the abortion? Satan needs blood, period. Bring it into this community and you will see a darkness. We drive through our community right now and it's a beautiful place. When you have a light, just a little flame of candle of God, it's good. The moment you let dark come in, you watch what happens to our beautiful community. And we can all say, "Oh, it's not dark, Delina, abortions, blah, blah, blah." No, it is, it's murder, it's wrong, we need to stop it. So as a businesswoman, I promise my community that I hope everyone does well, because I'm going to put my money behind people that do what's right.
Thank you, Ms. Bummer.
My name is Nathan Kaiser, Green Valley Road, and Steve Breeding is my supervisor. And I'm also in favor of the previous resolution that was brought by, for the Breeding at the last meeting, because it does state exactly what we need to say. This is a washed-out, watered-down version, and I don't know whose idea it was to change it. The previous version where it says exactly what I want to say, life is from conception to death. We should respect all life from conception to death, natural death. I loved Lynn Hess's Rock and a Hard Place. The hard place is the world, it'll grind you up pretty hard. And you only really get in trouble with it if you're between the rock and the hard place. But like you said, if you stand on the rock, you're no longer between the rock and the hard place. It's really quite a simple analogy, and it really makes a lot of sense. I appreciate that, it's the first time I've ever, I've ever heard that. But it's not a time for half-measures. In this country, it's eat up with evil. Every, every way we turn, and I was talking to somebody the other day, it's, it's happening so fast. I think we can all agree, it's happened a lot faster than we could ever imagine. In the last five years, there's things that have happened that I, it'll make my, it makes my head spin. And what we're talking about now, things that we're having to confront in this world, is quite shocking. As far as legally, as far as concerns on legal matters, I know some have spoken to others, I've, I've spoken personally with Todd Gackey of Family Foundation in Virginia, and they have a legal wing, and I can't, it's escaping me right now, the name of it. But he said that, and Josh, I think is the guy with the legal wing, spoke to, to some of the folks, and there is no legal issues here. He said, "The way it was originally written is just fine, and can be passed and should be passed." And he said, "Russell County is leading the way again." He said, "We're trying to work on this," and said, "You guys are," and I called him, he said, "You guys are out here getting ahead of this." And I said, "Yes, we are, because we're not going to sit around and wait for an abortion clinic to come into our community, just like we've waited, and we let the transgender policies pass the state of Virginia, when we should have been standing up long before that, we should have been going to vote, we should have been active, we should have been paying attention, and we should have been doing this all along." But we've gotten comfortable on our couches, at our houses, watching football games, going and enjoying Texas Roadhouse, or Ruby Tuesdays, or wherever you might be. It's time to get up, get involved, because the evil's coming, and it's come for you, it's coming for your children, you've got to get right. And to me, this, this, this one right here, this resolution we're looking at, that's riding the fence. You know what the secret about the fence is, the devil doesn't want you to know? He owns the fence. If you're riding the fence, he owns the fence, you're his. So it's time to get off the fence. You know, Delina's right, this world's all about compromise, it will compromise you right out of your soul. It's what it will do. And before we get there, I want to talk about one more thing after that, but I want everybody, if you, and I want you to listen carefully, if you are in favor of this resolution, stand up right now, this one on the screen. If you're in favor of the resolution from last week, please stand up.
Mr. Kaiser.
Yes, ma'am.
We, we're here, thank you.
Now, tonight, everybody listen up real quick, tonight is the last chance that you can go into Department of Education and submit comments about Title IX changes that are coming. These changes are all about the transgender agenda. They're going to make it a crime for a teacher, for you to, in the classroom, affirm gender at birth, whatever the gender is, if you don't hold up that, that person's new gender or whatever that is for you, then you're going to be criminally charged. Not only that, they're going to not tell you, if you have a teacher at that school your child goes to, they're not going to be they're not gonna be telling you that your child is suffering uh, from confusion of what gender they are or what name they want to be, or even what species they want to be. It's absolutely crazy. These Title IX changes are coming, uh, proposed by the Democrat Party. And if we don't go on and make comment, then they're gonna go without resolution. Now, they're likely gonna pass them anyway, but there will be lawsuits and they'll use these comments that we go on to make. So if you're interested and want to know more about where to go and how to do that, please see me after the meeting. And that's for the board and for the audience because 12:00 PM tonight is the last chance to make comment on that. Uh, folks, they're coming for the children. They want indoctrination from, from cradle to grave, is what they want to do. So, all right, that's all I can, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser.
I have to say, I didn't hear you speak today. It is good, but I think, um, part of it, I don't, I don't want anybody to upset me or anything. I'm just sitting like this. Please, I mean, I'm too, I'm always a common person. And you guys are not the same. You're presenting people, making votes. I'm glad it's not me, but I, I think on this issue, I, I, I overlook the note. I don't like to say, well, I do this, I do that. I've made my own choices. I don't want to point that finger and say, I do this. But on this issue, I would have a problem saying I'm pro-life. They, they say it's right or wrong. I believe what love says. I said, I really didn't plan on speaking. So all this stuff we see here, all these people, when you say, everybody, this is all temper, always gonna pass. We're all gonna pass. And when we, when we fall victim to death, where the Lord comes back or where, where we fall in grave, he comes back. We rise. We're gonna get a body, every one of us. So this is temper. Even people we see turn out, it's all temper. It's gonna go away. We're gonna get a body that's gonna live forever. Now, where you stand and you will be standing eternity, it depends on us, the basis, the basis of judgment, that's how. For me, I, I, so I just, I just hope that y'all are listening to the people standing here. I'm gonna do something a little different, you know? We've had a couple to ask, you know, everybody's here to stand. I'm not gonna ask everybody that's, that's pro-life to stand, but I've not heard anybody. I was gonna mark down, have me was for and have me was against. If there's anybody here that's, that's for killing babies, abortion, would you stand? And we're, I'm not wanting to attack, trust me, but this is the time to stand. If you feel strong about it, let it be known. If not, I want to point out to these folks that everybody here is pro-life. And uh, so, you know, uh, I, I, I would really like to put you guys on the spot. When you vote on this thing, I'd like to see a roll call vote, if it'd be okay. And uh, that's all I've got to say. Thank you for your time.
Could I get your name and address, please?
My name is Paul Hernan. I live at Swords Creek. You want my physical address? I'll give you that.
We have that, but you just didn't give us that at the beginning. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I've been in Russell County, Virginia all my life. Proud of it.
All hearts clear. Uh, those of you that have turned in, you know, they will be added to the record. Still need to do so, please give that to... Pardon me? All right.
I'm Sarah Fletcher, pastor, leading the Baptist Church, living in the Boston Church. Several years ago, I was asking them to talk to the church about some issues they had. At that point in time, I was working in the back. Going to this little small church, talking to them about some issues they had. Pastor told me, said, we've got a little bit of heaven in it. I asked him that where it came from. Sharon with me, that several years prior to that, there was a young lady that was a girl. She got pregnant. The family kicked her out. And the church there had built a little apartment, a little sunroof, and they had converted it with this pastor and that pastor. They told this young girl, said, you can move in to that room. They gave her a place. Child was born, she lived there, she was a little girl. And then they moved away. And actually, Pastor said, I lost contact. This pastor passed that church as well as me. Very remote. He said, uh, a couple of years ago, said, we got letters from them. Had money in them, came from Ohio. Said, it's not like that. Then the letter with the money, it was a note. Thank you to the church that taken in my mother. That man's daddy, he's a surgeon. There were no hyenas. Saving lives, helping people. I wonder how many doctors, nurses, teachers we feed. God help us. We ought to know better. This isn't some made-up deal. It's an age of lead care. I can say that. Do the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher, or Pastor Fletcher. One more time. All right. You have looked at this uh, resolution that's been on the screen. Of course, you have seen a resolution presented by the Breeding last month. We have passed that. Our county attorney will look at that and give you some extra knowledge. Okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, getting all my stuff together. Um, I did research at the direction of the board on um, uh, the possibility of an ordinance to ban abortion services in Russell County. And like I said, the Board of Supervisors is governed by Dillon's rule. And um, I'm gonna read a quote from a case because that's what Pastor explained what, what the power that this board has is. It said, it states, "In Virginia, the boards of supervisors of the counties do not have broad general authority to adopt whatever ordinance they deem appropriate or desirable. The power of a county like that of a municipal corporation is controlled by Dillon's rule, which authorizes locality to exercise those powers or adopt ordinances that the legislature expressly authorizes by statute or, or that are conferred by necessary implication." I've explained this to the board before, I think when it was, when we were dealing with the First Amendment uh, resolution. And you don't just have broad authority to pass laws. You have to pass, you're allowed to pass laws that you've been given permission to by the General Assembly, I guess is the easiest way to say that. At this time, there's no statute that expressly authorizes boards of supervisors, counties, to adopt a resolution that would ban abortion services or any blanket health services. That does not mean that there cannot be one. It just means that there's not one at this time. I cannot give you legal advice that to proceed forward with an ordinance is legal. You would almost certainly be challenged and lose at the taxpayer's expense at this time. Um, I'll, I'll jump around a little bit. I want to make sure I hit on everything that I've, that I've done in this. And I'll start with, uh, I spoke with two representatives from Senator Hackworth about legislation that he may introduce in the next General Assembly session. And um, because my advice to you is, um, you can pass resolutions, but to me, the, the, the best action is to pass a resolution that would support um, legislation that a senator or delegate is gonna put forth because they are the ones that make laws in Virginia, not local boards of supervisors. They're the ones that have the power to change that. And so to partner with them and to support their actions will further the cause that um, the people here have spoke about. And again, I'm just assuming the, the, the will of this board. Nobody's voted. I'm just, I'm just putting that out there. Um, so I was told that uh, they would not have any legislation, proposed legislation, to look at until about December of this year. And the reason that I was given for that is that they want, they are letting their legal experts look at that legislation to make sure that when, you know, if one of those bills do pass, that it will, it will survive litigation. It will survive any attacks. And that's, that's a wise move. And so what I will say is sometimes when trying to craft laws that, that make things right, it's, it's a slower process than people would want. But you have to make sure you thought about it from all angles to make sure it survives. I mean, to pass a law that just gets attacked and, and shot down is just gonna put you further behind from achieving your goals. Um, I do, they were very cooperative with his office. I, I appreciated um, the information that they gave me. And they did say that they heard from other localities about doing a resolution because an ordinance is not legally authorized at this time. And so they expect that to happen. And they did say that they would share, once they got all of their legislation paired, they would share that with us. And this board could review and see if you're in support of it. I was told that they expect there to be um, about probably at least three bills regarding abortion. One would be from conception. One would be a viability. And then I, I don't know, another one was there. Um, but that's what they expect. Um, the board could vote to support all of them and rank one. Like, the board could choose all of them. The board could choose none of them. But I do think that those actions will be most helpful in this cause. Um, I did rewrite uh, the resolution just a little bit. I used a lot of the language that Steve had. Um, one of the reasons that I pared it down to one page, trying to, you know, keep the, the main things, the resolution part, the resolve part, is because you could write pages on this. You could write, I mean, people have. You can write, you know, books and pages and pages and pages. But if you want this to be a symbol for Russell County and to go to the legislators and to go to Richmond or to go to the governor, you need to be succinct in your message. Uh, they're not gonna read, if, if every locality sends, you know, fifty pages or whatever they want to send, they're not, they're, they're not gonna get that message. Yeah, that's the important part, is getting the message. Um, as far as um, Mr. Helsberg, and I, I may be saying his name wrong. He was, he was very wonderful to work with. I've worked with him. But one thing that I told the school board, and I will tell this board too, while he was very nice, one, one of the questions I asked him, he works for the Freedom of, I, I don't want to say his organization wrong, but he works for that organization. He does not work for this board's supervisors. He does not give you legal advice that's designed to protect you or to protect taxpayers' funds. He gives advice to advance his cause. And that's fine. But that's what I'm hired to do, is not to take a position on, not to, you know, impose my own personal opinions, but to research the law and give you the risks and give you guidance that you can accept or that you can reject. If this board wants me to, I'd be happy to work with Mr. Helsberg again. But again, that has to be said. His, his mission is his cause. My mission is to make sure you, you advance your causes legally, the right way. Um, a resolution, I think everybody's talked about, you know, really doesn't do a whole lot. It basically just says, this is, this is how this board of supervisors collectively feels. And, you know, I did put it, you know, I left in there, and I think Steve had this in, that you would do everything within your power. So if your, your power were to expand, that would be great. And you can do more things. But I mean, I have to advise you right now, this board does not have a lot of power when it comes to regulating abortion. You know, the, again, going to the delegates, going to the senators, they're the ones that have the power to give counties that legislation. There is no other way. And so they are the people that need, we need to reach out to and work with to hopefully get that legislation. Because if there's a statute that, that allows you to do this, then you can, you can advertise it for thirty days and vote on it. And, and I will help you draft it. But until then, there is no legal authority for that. And I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has. I did provide you the criminal codes on abortion right now. Those are the, the criminal codes in Virginia. And so that's what, that's what current laws are regarding abortion. I suspect, you know, based on the Supreme Court decision, that that will change soon. But as, as we sit here today, this is what exists.
Well, I, I got one thing I want to say. It's okay. And I'll do respect, okay? What we're doing, we're sending a message. And I, I definitely prefer Steve's outline on the, on the message. Thing, another thing you need to consider is, and you know as well as the crowd knows, that Democrats have control of the Senate. And any piece of legislation, if we don't take a bold stand and send this message, we, we need to take over the Senate. And then we need to make sure that the legislation comes down in Virginia that says, no more. No more of this, just like Tennessee. But I'm not gonna sit here and spin my wheels as a leader and not take bold action in the way that Steve's presentation was. I'm not gonna water this thing down. And I'm just not gonna do it. And, you know, it, it, I appreciate Senator Hackworth. He's a good Christian man. He's trying to do the right thing. But when I talk to him on a daily basis, they know that the vaccine is against law. When you have a Democratic-controlled Senate that's gonna, this thing won't get out of committee because of, you know, the actions of the left. And we have got to send the message to let all these people know that, you know, we're gonna clean house in the Senate. We're gonna get new Senate. And, and, and then we'll get the laws presented that will defend our God-given rights and protect this church.
We understand that the resolution is very difficult, really. It just makes a statement how we feel. And I'm gonna tell you, I've read this resolution in years. I've been just like kicking the stuff. I didn't believe it. I didn't believe what you actually did. Uh, I don't know why we had to. But it did keep several paragraphs. But it, it took down any reference of life against conception or protection of conception and death. Uh, it eliminated any kind of reference to the state, federal constitution. Bleated the commemorative flag. And it basically walked out the public. I feel we just need to make the statement, we believe life is six. And send that. We know, they were exactly right. Feel the Senate's doing it through religion. This, this, you know, this legislation that they started to work on is likely not going anywhere. Unless it's, they put enough senators, Democrats in. We're worried about God, it's a fact. But in all probability, it's not gonna happen. The, we need to make that statement, the life is in, in said, uh, the references to the state, federal constitution, just to try to link this to this resolution to the Constitution, which gives us all of our God-given rights. And it, again, as somebody pointed out, it didn't know the commemorative flag. That was just a little high. And it's something I picked up in another reason. And why do these resolutions get passed? And they're just almost defeated by God. And, and feel some issue comes up and on. And, you know, two years down the road, somebody's wondering if we ever pass the resolution. That would be a vision of mine, of what the county stands. Uh, and as far as, you know, facilitating meeting and everything, I look at you guys out here and I see what you've done in the last group work. We're motivated, care about the county. There's a lot of good that I think you do. I think this board needs to harness all that energy and all that motivation. And I ask you to work on some of that. The reason the other issues uh, were included, like uh, elder abuse, drug abuse, that may include them. Of course, we need all the help we can get. And, and there may be some exceptional ideas out there. It's probably impressive. But we're never gonna see here, if we don't get some people. never gonna see here if we don't get some things done. I, I'm thrilled that you're coming out like this. Uh, so, she, it is, I'm just collaborating. I, I just don't want to do other than make a motion that we accept our original ordinance.
I'll say it.
Discussion. Have a motion and a second, and I have discussion. So, I'm gonna start the discussion. Um, I appreciate you guys, I really do. And certainly, there is no one here tonight that would say that we are not so bad. We are not, I, I don't think there is. I'm with, I don't, I would write it down, somebody's with you, and say it. You couldn't find anybody to stand up. But what we're trying to do here tonight is to make an impact. You sit here and listen to our attorney. And I understand that God's ways are not as easy. I recognize that, I certainly do. But if you want us to be able to move this forward in the way that we need to move it forward, help me out tonight with what we've got here. And I understand you're not pleased, I understand. But I'm gonna take a vote, I'm gonna take a vote.
Is that in the chair? See, we're in discussion. Resolution has basically moved anything to state of the law. An ordinance, all an ordinance is for, drag this thing out, lay it on the ground, and uh, it's not having any impact whatsoever. And, you're, I'd rather, I, I would rather vote against this, just to throw out something else. Ordinance that, that basically just buggered to what the, I don't know.
That's not what we're hearing. So, I've read everybody else's resolution, and I'm not leaving here without reading this. Okay? So, your ear, open your ears and listen to this resolution. All right? Whereas the United States Supreme Court recently overturned their decisions in Roe versus Wade and Planned Parenthood versus Casey, which had previously held that the United States Constitution conferred a right to abortion and whereat did the United States Supreme Court held in Dobbs versus Jackson, Women's Health Organization, the right to an abortion was not a constitutional law, and that the authority to regulate abortions was a matter for the people and their elected representatives. And, whereat, the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments to the United States Constitution provide for the protection of human life and whereat, the Board of Supervisors of Russell County expresses their desire for Russell County to be a pro-life county. What did I just say? Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors of Russell County declares that Russell County is a pro-life county and pledges to support this resolution by all means within its power. Be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Russell County, Virginia, hereby declares it has no interest in the recruitment, facilitation, or support of any companies or providers whose business activities serve to initiate, support, or expand abortion services, and the board shall oppose establishment of any such facilities to the extent of their power as allowed by the state and federal law. Certification of adoption of resolution, and that goes on to be undersigned, and it has everyone's name, which you'll see right there. It says, "We intend to stand to be a pro-life sanctuary county." Our attorney has just explained to us that we need to be succinct in our stand, that the federal, I mean, that our state representative will be able to take this and mold it and do the right thing. So that's, that's our stand here, not necessarily every one of ours standing, I understand that. But it does say, it does say that we stand with you to be a pro-life sanctuary county. No comments from the, from the audience, just brief.
This resolution, you just read, doesn't say what a pro-life county is.
Don't even define.
Is it pro-life or white-based pervert cattle or whitey bugs? There's nothing that defines it. There's no mention of life beginning at conception, which is what this is all about. And uh, I just, I'm gonna go in and say it.
Anybody else want to comment?
I personally think that we need to have a statement, just make it on the table. I just thought, anything last night?
That's what Steve put together.
So, let me, let me ask, uh, let me ask you something, Ms. Pat. Can we add that phrase to what we've got?
Sure, I mean, you can amend either.
Let's just pass Steve, we got a motion and a second.
We're still in discussion.
Yeah, we are.
Yep, I'm gonna call for a motion.
Yeah.
We're still in discussion.
You can amend either resolution however you see fit. I drafted just another alternative to be a little bit more succinct. Like I said, I took out a lot of the constitutional, but you can, I give legal advice, I, I draft what I'm, what I'm asked to draft, and then you all, you know, you all take the action. Um, this is just my legal advice, you can add from conception, and, and, and again, that, I'll, I'll take responsibility for that. I, I could've defined it, I could've defined it better. I was, I was more in just taking pieces from Steve's and incorporating it and just making it a little bit shorter.
I'll call for a motion, we've been on too far, too long with these people. We see what you're up against, uh, and the public sees it, you see it. I mean, it's just a resolution.
Resolution, it's not law, it's not an ordinance, and we know that we won't have it. And it's certainly not gonna, this resolution is not gonna be taken and molded by the legislature.
No.
I would, I would like to make a motion to amend this to include life.
Wait, it's already in this original motion. It's in the, we have a motion on the floor, seconded, and we're in discussion. Have you even read this, uh, the original motion? It talks about life begins at said period.
That's what I support. And that's what Steve did.
That's, that's what we're trying to vote on right now.
Let's see if we're getting that.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're voting on Steve's motion to go back to the original one, on the review.
Had a copy of it last.
No.
Well, let's just go.
Would you roll call?
Okay, so.
I vote for that, Steve.
Uh, Mr. Christian has asked that we pass.
Wait, no, we're voting on the original motion. We're not voting on this, this argument. Yes, we're in discussion, but it's already in there, we're, the motion, that, um, the ordinance that we're voting on, life begins at conception is already in there.
All right, it's, it's in there.
It's not this one that's on the board.
Let's not, gee, not all of me, some y'all.
The audience knows it.
I would like for the audience to be quiet enough that we, as board members, can speak and be heard. Add that, Mr. Steve, please. Uh, I, I have stated, this is the third or fourth time, I am for whatever state's in it, life starts at seven.
It's in here.
Now, whether it's here or what's out, whatever we pass, that's why I support that life.
It's, it's already in the motion that we're trying to vote on.
What's laying there? All for the vote again.
Any further discussion? Yes, please. Heidi, in the original one, was there anything that you saw that would be a legal conflict or didn't cause a resolution?
No, the only thing that I would rec- recommend that we didn't talk about is, it talked about elder rights and things like that. But, a resolution just says that you'll do anything within your power, and so, again, I, like I said, your power's limited, but, I mean, you're not violating by not going, by exceeding your power, so, I mean, you could pass the resolution.
Elder care.
It, it talked about other things, just, you know, what we've talked about mainly, and what the crowd has talked about mainly was um abortion, um.
Yeah, you did, it's a thing.
It talked about, um, and I'm not, and obviously, these are important issues too, it just was a little bit further off topic, but about from not, not only protecting human beings from abortion, but also the immediate threats of human trafficking, assisted suicide, passive use of anesthesia, elder abuse, illegal drug trafficking, and sexual exploitation and endangerment of children, so it just, just.
Those are issues that's needed, with this sentence.
But that was one reason I took that language out, it's just it went a little further than the abortion.
I'm gonna vote, Steve.
Are you ready to vote, Orson? Orson's already voted yes. He said he can take her line in for protection.
Orson's voted yes.
He's already voted yes.
I'll vote yes to the original ordinance.
Original ordinance.
The original ordinance that not on.
Original, yeah, I'm gonna vote yes. Okay, cool.
I just wanna say that to.
Please be mindful of what's at stake here today. Please be mindful that this may not yet pass the county law. So, remember that. We, excuse me, just a minute, we want to do the best we can do to push it forward. Nobody here does not want to see this pushed forward. We want our uh delegates and our senators and our governors to be able to have the power to do what it needs to do. Call your senators, call your delegates, get at them, they have the power in their hands, call them just like you call me, stand before them, send them letters, that's what they're there for. Thank you for coming, you're a late your seat. I'll take a break. We're getting ready to come back into session. Is everybody ready? And we've had no changes so far. So, I'm so sorry that we jumped that. So, I need an approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. I need a second. I'll second it. All in favor?
Uh.
And if most motion carries, we do have an approval. I apologize again to this board and to the crowd. All right, we're down to constitutional officers, reports, and requests. Thank you, Mr. Lawson, for hanging in there with us.
Mr. Carter.
Mic not on on day one.
Okay. Yeah, it's on now.
Thank you.
I just wanted to talk to you about a few things that's coming up. First of all, we're working on getting the tax tickets out. And as everybody knows, or I hope they know, there has been a increase in value of the personal property taxes. We just want to make people's taxes go up quite a bit, at least twenty percent on vehicles, cars, trucks, campers. So, and trailers, I just wanted you to realize that. And I wanted the public to realize too, that if they have vehicles that are over a hundred thousand miles, they can go to the commissioner's office, and they can do abatements on those for high mileage. A lot of people in the county, citizens, I don't think, know that. So, that is an option for them. Uh-huh. They can do a... Well, you can go talk to the commissioner's office. I'm sure they'll be glad to help you. The values, those values come through NADA. Also, with the, I just wanted the public to know that we, you know, that they do have that option, that they can go and see if they can get some of those values decreased, and see what the commissioner can do for them to help them on that. Also, of course, the taxes will be due November the twenty-eighth this year. We do offer payment plans, but now, those payment plans, if it's not paid by the twenty-eighth, there will still be penalty interest added to that. But if you can get yourself set up on a payment plan, then, you know, for next year, we can take out, you know, you can pay however much that you feel like it's your budget for. Just want the citizens to know that they can come in and set up payment plans too with us. Because I know this is going to be a hard year for people, and we're going to try to get the tickets out just as soon as we can. Another thing that was brought out a couple of meetings ago, that some of the citizens has been talking to me about, was the reversion money from the school. I think it was stated in the meeting that the treasures, that one has the authority to bring that money back in. I am the one that has the authority to bring the money back into the county. I take it from the school fund to the general fund. But you, as the board, you're the ones who has the authority as to where that money goes after we bring it back in. I do not have the power to make that decision. So, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that, that it's not me that makes the decision to where those reversion monies come back to. That it, that once it comes back out of the school fund to the county fund, then you make the decision as to where you're going to put that money. And then I do that at your direction. And the last thing I had was with our delinquent taxes. I know that there's been a little bit of confusion about that, when we have a real estate sale for delinquent taxes. I just want to assure the citizens and the board that I do everything possible for the taxpayer to make sure to try to get those taxes paid. A delinquent sale is the last option, and it is not taken lightly by me at all. I try to work with the citizens. I try to set them up on payment plans. I try to work out something for them. But that has to go both ways. They have to work with me too, to make it, you know, feasible for both of us. So, I know there was some questions about that, and that's just sort of what I wanted to talk to you about tonight. It's just a few things that's been brought to my attention, and I wanted you guys to be aware of it.
Well, I want to say I appreciate it. I know it's a hard job. I think it's easy to buy stuff and get the past, and what's next, and stuff like that. I want to say what you do today, and all the hard work that you do to help everybody. And to help the citizens, I know you do a good job. I love it, and you do good things, not bad. If you do, it's a good job working.
Well, thank you. I try. I try to treat everybody the way I would want to be treated if I was on the other side of that desk. And I would treat them, I try to treat everybody equally and fair. What I would do for one, I would do for the other.
What if you have two hundred thousand miles?
Maybe you'd look...
Or three.
That might be a higher abatement that you might give.
Can't tell, to expensive truck.
But that's all I have tonight. Thank y'all.
Thank you so much.
The personal property didn't, no, the rates did not raise. It's just the value on personal property that went up. Where we've been in this COVID situation, where they couldn't get the chips for the vehicles, it caused our used vehicle values to raise. So, that's, the NADA values are higher on used vehicles than what they were last year. So, just for example, I've looked at mine, and one of my vehicles, the value went up five thousand dollars from what it was last year. So, the value went up. Yes, the values went up, so that's going to make the tax amount, you know, to be higher. The tax rate did not go up. It's still a dollar ninety-five. So, you did not raise the tax rate, but the values did go up.
Anything else? Thank you so much.
You.
All right, no more constitutional officers, I see. Thank you for staying with us. I appreciate that. County attorney reports and requests. I think we've got one of them in Russell County. A live resolution. Katie, unless you can say something else?
No, I think, I think we've taken care of that. We can move on to the insurance retirement program. This was something that the board passed several months ago to give the employees an incentive to stay and work for Russell County, and to also be able to provide them some help with insurance if they retire before they reach Medicare age. One of the issues when we passed the policy was how could we work the constitutional officer employees into this? And they're a little bit differently situated than the regular county employees. So, I listened to... And so I, I listened to... Thank you. I, I listened to their concerns and tried to think of ways to, uh, amend the personnel policy and this, and this, um, policy to allow them to let, let, let their employees participate. I've, I've sent the board, uh, some language that, that I proposed to amend it, but we, Lonzo and I met with some of the constitutional officers today and they brought up, they said that helps, that there was still, uh, one other issue. And I think we got that all resolved. So, uh, um, what Lonzo's posted up on the screen is the insurance retirement program. And I'm trying to see, uh, can you scroll down? Does, does that have the language I added, Lonzo? Yes, okay. It says elected, uh, number six, uh, Lonzo's got five highlighted, but nothing changed there. Um, and number six, um, I've added elected constitutional officers are required to adopt, implement and maintain the most current version of the sick leave. And that says and/or personally, but when we looked at the personnel policy, it's actually called paid time off. So the personal leave needs to be amended and just put and/or paid time off. Sections of the personnel policy duly adopted by the Russell County Board of Supervisors. Uh, they are not required to adopt the entire personnel policy. The constitutional officers voiced concerns that, that some of our policies would conflict with the way that they handle things and they did not just want to adopt our broad personnel policy. So this was a way to carve out an exception to let them still participate. To let them still participate, but, um, comply with what we expect of them, like the monthly time sheets. So that would be the amendment there. Also, in meeting with them today, I drafted a little bit more language to add to the end of that paragraph to say, um, constitutional officers who choose to adopt the paid time off, um, policy may provide less paid time off per each group of years of service, but may not exceed, may not exceed the amount that is provided for in the county's personnel policy. And one of the concerns was is, um, some of the constitutional officers do not, um, give as much leave as the county does because based on their, based on their department, that would make it almost impossible to operate. And so they did request that exception if the board is, uh, amenable to that. Uh, because I think we would have to do that. The, the problem that we have is, um, is if we only allowed them, if we only amended the sick leave policy, I don't know that employees would be able to get the hundred and seventy-five days. It's contemplated by this agreement. So we wanted to let them use both paid time off days and, um, sick leave days. Personnel policy would have, um, uh, an amendment in two places. Um, in policy seven, um, oh-seven dash oh-four, which is the lead with, uh, the paid time off. And there's a section that's already, um, labeled constitutional officers and employees. And we can just add to the end of that paragraph the following language. Notwithstanding the maximum numbers, number of hours that may be paid out at retirement, an employee of a constitutional officer who has adopted the insurance retirement policy and abided by the requirements of the insurance retirement program may accumulate, um, hours in ex, in excess of two hundred and forty hours to be used solely for participation in the insurance retirement program. If an employee retains hours in excess of the maximum of two hundred and forty hours and later chooses not to participate in the insurance retirement program, then the employee shall not be paid out in excess of the two hundred and forty hours and any additional hours shall be forfeited. And that, that two hundred and forty hours, that's by code, um, regarding constitutional officers. And so those are, those are added together, but that's all that they can be paid out and they will have to sign a waiver if they choose, um, if the constitutional officer adopts these policies, that employee will have to acknowledge that, sign an acknowledgement and waiver that, acknowledge that they can only be paid out two hundred and forty hours of sick leave, two hour, two hundred and forty hours of paid time off if they retire and choose not to participate into the program. But, uh, after meeting with them, the, the constitutional officers did seem satisfied and I'm satisfied that this will, um, protect the county from a ne, unnecessary liability. Yes, to make those amendments.
I'll make them.
Can I have a motion, uh, to adopt the insurance retirement program?
The amendments that I've seen...
The amendments will be...
The, and, and to also amend the personnel policy as to sections seven oh-four and seven oh-five. Those, that sentence that I read would be added to both those sections.
My motion, stay, vote, vote.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second in discussion. Here again, I'll call the board. All in favor?
Uh.
In the poll, your opinion? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The last thing that I have under me, and Lonzo may have to answer some of the board's questions, but since it involved a contract, he, he put it under me. As, um, boards aware, um, the board authorized Lonzo to send out a request for qualifications regarding a consultant, um, to the board for a particular contract. And we did get two responses, um, from that, um, request for qualifications. And Lonzo and I met with representatives of, of both firms and they were both, um, we, we deemed both to be qualified. So Lonzo proceeded under our small purchase policy, which allows for contracts, um, professional contracts, which this one does contemplate engineering, um, under sixty thousand dollars. And so he worked, we worked with, um, qualifications, the price. And it's my understanding from speaking to Lonzo that his recommendation, um, is to go with the firm, Contesta. Uh, one of those reasons is, um, one of the people working there, um, I, I can't remember Lonzo exactly what his position at DQ was, but that was something that was, um...
It was David Taylor. He's, he was the director of DQ for sixteen years. So, and one of the things that the board supervisors directed at me and I looked and said, and doing feasibility studies on landfills. We, we as the county operate a, a landfill, so we know how to maintain what the regulations are on the existing one and one that has been shut down as far as the DQ regulations and, and gas monitoring, well monitoring, water monitoring, digging, you know, uh, leachate. We do that on a continuous basis. And one of the things that stood at that as far as doing the interviews, which as Katie said before, we, we, they both were very qualified, you know, engineering firms. But, and when we went through them and I, I put them into the package, one of the things that I considered as, as considering a landfill proposal was that this was one, I had an engineering company that had done additions and extensions and, you know, renovations to one. But the Contesta company had the experience of implementing one from the beginning. And that's what y'all have to consider at the beginning. That, that is a very rare skill set from an engineering perspective is to be at the front end during the, you know, developmental stages. And one of the things that, that the engineering firm, the board supervisors wants to do is have enough data whether this is feasible at the beginning and protect the county.
Well, I'll make that motion. Do the motion carry?
Um, hold on just a second. And I hate, I hate to interrupt you, but I do want to just say if the board, that was my understanding, what, um, Lonzo's recommendation would be. But, uh, they did in their, um, their cost submittal, their proposal, they did send a proposed contract. I did have several issues with that. It's my understanding, uh, Lonzo, I was not able to speak with him, but Lonzo did and they want me to send my, a red line version of my suggestion. So if this board does approve the county administrator's request, I would do it subject to me being able to negotiate and finalize a contract because there's certain terms in there if we can't get changed then I probably couldn't advise the board to pass it to accept that contract.
Okay, you know, I'll make that motion.
Let me just... I'm sorry. And let me just assure, what, what the terms and conditions that Katie's referred to is more of, uh, uh, where it would be mitigated at legal. It has nothing to do with the performance or the scope of work with price. So that's got to be with the, yes, where it would be mitigated if we went into a civil suit or et cetera.
It would be how liabilities to come in.
Yes, if some, if some failed.
Okay, I'll, I'll say my, uh, thank you. All in, from, from your part of the conference, what my motion is for. So I'm hearing that we have a motion on the floor for, uh, hiring Contesta.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I have a question. I'll need a second. I have a second. All right, here it comes. Uh, the session, second.
Where are they from? They got companies in both Virginia and West Virginia. They have one in, in the Shandora Valley and, uh, they've got, up in Winchester area. They also have one in West Virginia. So they're, they're a pretty big firm. But the, of course, the director, David Peddle, which was the director of DQ, he was the D, in Virginia for sixteen. So that's...
What's the amount?
The, when you're, when you're looking at, uh, professional services, that's, that's what you're looking at rather than the amount. And I wanted that to consider because I didn't know how to do it because I, I work with fee schedules. So I asked them to give me a fee schedule plus incidental costs, plus their qualifications. So, you know, and not to exceed amount. But when you, as, as Steve knows, as an engineer, and it's the same way as attorneys, you know, dispay for, or any professional services, when you do it, one of the considerations during the scoring matrix, you know, that, you know, like you utilize during contract negotiations is, again, fact that this, this company had experience on the front end or during initial development on a, on a new facility, you know, a new landfill. So that experience is very rare, especially you don't want to be into, I mean, we'll say this, our, one of our neighbors, Bristol. So if, based off of the experience and being able to prevent it, he would know the front end phases from beginning to end because he has experience for sixteen years for the state of Virginia. So, I did have a not to exceed, but that was, uh, that was what I put in there, not to exceed. Because I wanted to put that in there to stay one under the Virginia small purchases. No, I, I first sent them a draft, not to exceed. I said, one, one with one company was thirty-five thousand and the other company was thirty-five thousand. One thirty-five, one forty-five. What I put in their proposals to include the scope of services during the negotiation, I wanted to make sure that we capped this out because one of the things that the board supervisors had conveyed to me is they didn't want to spend the extended amount, even though this is ARBA. Yes, I did. The one was thirty-five, they came in with a cap at one forty-five. But again, that was not a consideration on the technical or engineering services. Again, if you want a full comprehensive report, feasibility study on engineering services, which you know price is not a factor if you're, you're doing it. But again, I'm not capping it down. I wanted to stay under the sixty. What if, a reason I put that in is if they had went, if I got bids back that had exceeded the sixty thousand. Yes, okay. Yes, I know. But the, I'm, I'm explaining to the rest of them. I didn't want, I wanted to put that in to make sure I didn't exceed the small purchases.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We begin the discussion. All in, come to the board. All in favor of the hiring, the hiring from Contesta?
Contesta.
So, uh, uh, can you oppose?
I oppose.
Got one opposed. Any attention? There's no attention. Motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, next is county administrator reports and requests.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And then one of the things I want to add on to this contract on the feasibility is it is being paid out of the ARBA funds. It, it qualifies under infrastructure evaluation. So this will not come out in the county taxes. This will come under the ARBA funds. But even if we, we still do our defilements and financials. First on the county administrator request is now we're back to the ARBA funds again. As of course y'all heard during the, uh, citizens' comment period that the squads, the fire departments and EMS are having issue, uh, uh, difficulties during this inflationary period. One of the things that, as y'all know, I went out with the board supervisors to ask for a thousand dollars per month increase for the next twelve months for each of the thirteen departments. You have eight fire departments and five EMS departments, which would equate to a hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. So that's, that's why I need a motion. Now, Lord, yes, sir.
I have a motion.
It's a additional thousand on top of what we already have heard on the budget.
That'll help with your...
Gas lane, yes, gas.
Transportation, that's one of the biggest causes. Okay, we have a motion.
I'll say it.
I've got a second. End of discussion.
Yeah. Yes, sir. Yeah, I do, I do. I still, we still cook it with the board supervisors. I think y'all have been very fine service. And we have, we have utilized these, uh, and I've got the treasurer here and I'm not going to put her on the spot, but we have ample funds to be able to cover these. And, and that's one of the things that we drafted in the letter. And as y'all know, that the price of fuel has went down there's but there. And, but after December, after the elections, I'm going to say this, this is my call only, it's going to go back up. So this, this is to protect, this is to protect the humans. But when you go back in January, it will be forty. But I, that's, that's my call. And the squads approached us to do it. Y'all have had been very generous with EMS and fire departments with giving equipment money. You've given radio money to get them up. That's going to take them fifteen years out. Russell County, right down, other counties have, have asked. And I, I'm not going to say which counties, there'll be two big ones that ask, ask for our model for what we're doing to help EMS. You created in the papers. So, uh, y'all are taking the lead on this. So, again, uh, the motion for one thousand per month for all fourteen, uh, emergency departments for a total of one hundred fifty-six thousand dollars.
Okay, we have a motion for that.
Second.
We have that already.
Yes.
All right, we begin the session. All right, all in favor? Can you oppose? Any suggestions? Motion carries. Thank you. Baco.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Second thing on, uh, is just a reminder on the Baco twenty, two thousand twenty-two annual conference. This is at the Regional Convention Center in, on November the thirteenth through the fifteenth. This is the annual one. And as a discussion, you know, with the, uh, Sheriff Russell Wallace, that y'all usually choose ongoing either in the November. But I think with all the legislation that y'all have proposed, especially over the last two board meetings, that January would be the more important board meetings as far as Baco is concerned. So I've given that, it's on for consideration. Next on county administrator reports is, as Baco again, we did, Russell County, board supervisors hosted and many board members attended, Region Twelve and Thirteen legislative meeting right here in this room in the Russell County Governor's Center on August the twenty-third. And of course, in your packet, you've got a, a Baco living appreciation, you know, thanking us for supporting both Regions Twelve and Twelve and Thirteen and for taking again the lead in, in Southwest Virginia. Next is, we're back on disposal side. We're still in negotiations with, uh, two property owners right now for the PD. We're still in negotiations with two property owners right now for the Feeny disposal site location, and that's, that's current status. So actually, I talked to them today. It looks very favorable. So I'll be getting with the county attorney and then we're going to be proceeding with it.
I will say this. My one is, it's all, look at every lane, go around everything, et cetera.
You're talking about, oh, we're done, yes.
And we're doing everything we can. And I appreciate it. I appreciate what you're doing and I know it's, it ain't the county's fault. I appreciate everything, you know, citizens don't, they don't understand. And they're throwing it over the hill and on the road, on the side of the road, they piled up the high, couldn't get far by.
I know. And it's coming to that. So, but, but one of the things, but one of the things, and I won't get it out too far out of the weeds on this, we had negotiated with the property owner that was at the previous time. We drew up a lease. We got to the point to sign off on it. He backed out. That put us looking for property, and it was very difficult on the board supervisors to be able to find this, you know, accommodation. So we worked diligently at it, we're negotiating. DEQs. Absolutely. Thank you. I'll give the board an update on the Feeny. Like I said, we had discussions with them today, it looks very favorable. Next is the APA Core System Moding. This is on the Russell County Clerk of Certain Court. Of course, they another good annual report as far as the Certain Court clerk from the auditors of public accounts. So, and that is in the board's pack. Next, on the county administrator request is the VDOT Dainte, and it's VDOT Dainte Depot renovation contract. This is a contract that I need approval on for, for again, more construction. This is a VDOT grant and a VDOT contract, but again, we are the financial stewards on it, so we've got to approve the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Pete. Any discussion? Yeah? Give you a second. Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Next on county administrator request is DHCD's Dainte Regional Sewer Line Extension Agreement. This is a continuation of DHCD's requirements for the regional sewer line. Y'all approved the other previous issues. So this is just a, a motion and agreement for the extension agreement. I'll say.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Next on county administrator request is Department of Criminal Justice Services. This is the witness program grant for seventy thousand dollars. This is a total worth seventy thousand dollars through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and it has no match.
I'll say. Perry got a motion in a second. Any discussion? I'll call them both. All in favor? Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Next on county administrator request is the voter registration ice stabilator. Of course, it's in the packet. This is the beat. The new code of Virginia shall also report all department elections, the number and result of absentee ballots cast early in person pursuant to subsection twenty-four point two, national one point one separately from the number and results of all absentee ballots. This is part of machines that will help us tabulate this. It's a sole source, so I need approval for a ice stabilator for eight thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars. Do you? Do you, general, yes or no? I'll say.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? I'll call them both. All in favor? Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Next on the county administrator report is the VDOT Resolution for Highway System Project Seven OBD Eight, National Ninety-seven, which is the Route seven fifty-one. I have talked with the town of St. Paul. They do not object to this, and they know what their responsibility is once it's reverted back. So I need approval on the motion of this VDOT resolution on Highway seven fifty-one. This is a ban.
Oh, my goodness. I have a motion in a second. Okay. Um, all in favor? Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. I think we did that.
We did, baby. Next on the county administrator request is the CSA supplement allocation for eleven thousand one hundred forty-one dollars and nine cents. This is what they need to do to finish out FY twenty-two and balance the books. This is the county's local share requirement. I need a motion for eleven thousand one forty-one oh nine.
I'll say. I have a second. Thank you. Yeah? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Next on the county administrator request is the school board reversion funds correction. As you can see, last time we, we approved the five hundred seventy-four thousand, seven fifty-two, eighteen, after we worked with the schools to pick up the June payroll cost, that was a correction of two hundred eighteen thousand, two hundred thirty dollars and five cents for a balance of what will come in back into the general funds of three hundred fifty-six thousand, five hundred twenty-two dollars and thirteen cents.
We motion, we accept those votes. I have a motion in a second. I have a second. Um, discuss this or I'm going to call them both. All in favor? Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Next on the county administrator request is the National OPIA settlement payment. This is the first payment. This is one of just many payments. This is the first installment of forty-three thousand, two hundred sixty-five dollars and ninety-six cents. Now with this, I need to bring this in, but for the board's consideration, y'all need to start looking for programs that would be able to utilize these funds because that's one of the things they do look at for utilization, and it has to be related to recovery. So I can do that.
Um, as far as, as far as what's been settled so far, I'm not sure. I don't know if Lonzo has a number on those payments, but I just wanted to remind, this is not even a full settlement of the case. This only settled part of the case, so there will be some additional funds. I don't know how this is structured, I don't know if Lonzo knows, but there will be even, if it's just a few payments, yes, that doesn't settle the whole case.
And that's why I said, as it comes through, if you sit on it, and that was one of them. You may be sitting a while because they're still going through the administration and liquidation. So if you have a program that's recovery related, you know, you've got these funds available, but city restricted into the general fund. I need a motion for approval of forty-three thousand, two hundred sixty-five dollars and ninety-six cents.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Opposed? Any extensions?
Ma'am chair, on the next one for the Russell County Department of Strategic Coordinator, I'd like to table that one. Uh, we, we may have found a candidate, so the first candidate has, has come back before the board that we interviewed. So he's made, in his desires that, known that he would like to have the job, so he's trying to work it out with, as I said, to be tabled. Okay. Next is the Russell County Tourism Coordinator. Okay. Of course, we all had Shala Little doing, but she's an intern. She was a graduate. Now we're at the point where her, her internship was up, she graduated with honors, so I need approval to advertise for a Russell County, you know, tourism coordinator. Uh, one of the things I want to add on to it, you know, sitting on the casino board, they call it the transportation board, this is the casino board, which we're doing very well at, as y'all can see in the paper, this is one of the things that we're going to try to capture under this, this, these funds because it is related to tourism. So we're, we're working with Senator Pillion on this and Israel Quinn, and to see if we can change the terminations because right now, you know, we're going to add that into this current legislature legislation. So I ask for approval to advertise for the Russell County Tourism Board.
I'll make it. I have a motion in a second. Um, no further discussion needed out of this. All in favor? Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Number sixteen, the Russell County Planning Commission plan, of course, you approved this, the Planning Commission approved it. We need approval with DOS to move it right away between father and son is revised plan that's already been approved. This is the revised plan.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Guys, the Planning Commission plan. All in favor? Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Next on the county administrator request is the Russell County Library Travel Request for Will and Small Libraries Conference on the ninth through the fourteenth, through the seventeenth, Library of Virginia, Dean in Richmond, on the ninth, through the twenty-second, through the twenty-third. I need approval for the group.
Please read it. If it's a motion, it's repeating in a second. All in favor? Uh, opposed? Any questions? I have a question.
Ma'am, make a close county administrator request request. That is correct, sir.
Okay. Board of discussions and reminders, we have had those today, and does anybody have anything else?
Just to break the, uh, something I know is true, that, that, that's, you know, it might be, can be lovely, same as house. Uh, and I know, but I would like the board to really look deeply, maybe have more of those homes that they could have, houses, uh, houses are so beautiful, and if you want a place to live, you know, like, uh, makes it really hard, and I know that we're really glad, uh, I'm working today, we're working right now on my, house, Luke, he's down there in that area for the Harper Home, and, uh, so we're moving, I have, we're getting, uh, the other side of town, like, to capture that house, set up the property field. Uh, I'd like to be able to do that, and also, we have the real estate, uh, for a place to stay with the color board field, uh, and I had to send my way to, uh, to meet the relevant, and then we're going to put it in the north in the home because it's a close form, this corner of the world, north. Same as house, so, you know, but I would love for us to be able to add something like that, so everybody can have the open mind.
Well, we met up live, uh, about seven, uh, at the, uh, head, we did, we, that, that's the one that's been done. Same desire. It's been done now. That, that, you know, and work some guidance, like, for the service. I appreciate it. Sorry.
We've got a announcement. I hope the man will last tonight. And, um, announcement for the next board meeting, October the sixth, October sixth, this clock. I'm sorry. Pushed it out there, so we're going to push it to the door, it'll be October. I'm sorry. Okay. Is that okay with everybody? All right. You're all good? I declare this meeting adjourned. I'll see you in October. Thank you. We need to, we have to, I'm sorry, I can't just go and do that. I'll be dead in a whole month. That is correct. I need a vote. Can somebody give me a motion for October sixth?
I'll give you a motion.
I'll make that motion. All right. I'll second it. I've got a motion in a second. All in favor? Uh, any opposed? Motion carries. I apologize. Just trying to take over.